We're good. Thank you Chair Welch, Deputy Clerk Good here, I'll be taking role tonight, so a little change in plans. I have a parole call, Commissioner Goodell. Commissioner Monroe. Commissioner Wiegand. Commissioner Griesinger. Commissioner Schechter. Commissioner Schechter, I believe you're on mute. Okay, I see. Okay. And Chair Welch.
Alright, um, so who are the voting members, it would be myself, Krista, Cindy, and Stephanie.
And Commissioner Wiegand as well.
Oh yes, Jim, sorry, okay. Housekeeping, excellent, okay, um, welcome everyone, thank you for joining tonight's meeting. The planning commission is reading what we pursue to Minnesota statute section thirteen D dot zero two one through the ongoing health mandate. Information related to joining this new meeting is available on the agenda under quick links, watch city meetings, and few agendas and packets on the bottom of the homepage at cityofcarver.com. We ask anyone wishing to address the commission, wait to be recognized by the sheriff, myself, and wait your turn to speak. And please do not speak over, speak over other people. All just the callers will need to provide their name and addresses to the record during the public hearing. So just, uh, this, uh, this is a bit more popular than most other commission meetings, um, so this may be a quick rundown. There are a few housekeeping items, and then we'll move on to the presentation and other stuff for the listening. So, next is to approve the agenda from the last meeting, do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Commissioner Monroe, make a motion to approve the agenda. Thank you, uh, do I have a second? Commissioner Goodell, second. Thank you. Krista, alright, any discussion? Alright, seeing none, um, Brenda, would you please take the role for the motion?
Commissioner Goodell.
Commissioner Goodell, aye.
Commissioner Monroe.
Commissioner Monroe, aye.
Commissioner Riggs. Oh, excuse me, Commissioner Wiegand.
Commissioner Wiegand, aye.
Commissioner Griesinger.
Commissioner Griesinger, aye.
Chair Welch.
Aye. The next item is to approve the minutes from the January twenty, twenty twenty-two planning commission. Um, can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Commissioner Wiegand will make a motion.
Thank you, Jim, uh, do I have a second?
Commissioner Griesinger, second, a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Stephanie. Alright, no discussion, aye soon. Alright, uh, Brenda, would you take the role?
Commissioner Goodell.
Commissioner Goodell, aye.
Commissioner Monroe.
Commissioner Monroe, aye.
Commissioner Wiegand.
Commissioner Wiegand, aye.
Commissioner Griesinger.
Commissioner Griesinger, aye.
Chair Welch.
Alright, too long. Okay, um, now is the start of our new business, the public hearing. It is not open yet, we will have a presentation from Aaron Smith, the Community Development Director. Director Smith.
Thank you. Brenda, I'm getting a couple messages, is it possible for you to mute while I talk?
Unfortunately then, the people that are watching on Granicus would not be able to hear. So I will try my best not to stir or make any noise, I will go ahead and turn my camera off.
So thanks everyone for your patience, we have two systems running right now, we have Zoom, which you all are on the same, and then Granicus, uh, which is live streaming and saving to the computer. I totally agree, it's really distracting, but I don't have a solution at this point, so we're gonna try to. Can everyone see my screen, if you can, give me a thumbs up. There we go, how's that? Perfect. Alrighty, first of all, thank you all for joining us tonight, uh, it's really great to have an engaged group of citizens that have agreed to join us. Okay, so let's get started, so the game plan tonight, we're reviewing a development called Brookview. So first, I'm going to give a staff presentation, then I'm gonna ask that the developer introduces himself, gives a brief project overview if you'd like. The planning commission, then we'll have the opportunity to ask clarifying questions. So questions directly about the presentation, or about what was shared, that's a good time to ask those questions. But we won't get into kind of the meat of the discussion until after the public hearing. So after your clarifying questions are through, we'll start the public hearing, we'll take public comment. I know there's been some confusion about public comment, everyone is welcome to join us, everyone is welcome to share, so. We'll go beyond just clarifying questions, I think it's like a little bit about the public hearing, you can ask questions to staff or the developer. So for the public hearing, Brenda, who you saw, she is the host of the meeting, so if you'd like to speak, I would ask that you send your name and your address to her in a chat, just so we can keep it semi-organized. I know Zoom is a little bit of a challenge, but we're gonna try our best. So during that time, the planning commission will receive comments, they don't participate in dialogue at that time. So don't anticipate that you're going to ask the planning commission a question and get an answer necessarily. Um, well, don't anticipate roundtable, staff and the developer will follow up after the public hearing. If there are clarifying questions, that should be addressed. Again, all community members are welcome, and we would appreciate you addressing the commission with your thoughts. So what happens next, what happens after this meeting, during this meeting? The planning commission tonight gives a recommendation to the city council. So at this point, the planning commission is not the decision maker, that's the city council. And the time between today, the seventeenth, and March seventh, which is the game plan for city council, there might be some changes in the plans based on the feedback that we get tonight. So between now and the seventh, the developer and staff work through comments and options that we hear at this meeting to figure out what we can change if we need to, to hit that city council meeting on March seventh. So, let's get started, let's talk about site and project details. So project location, we are directly south of the Meadows at Spring Creek Development, south of Spring Creek Drive. We're west of the Spring Creek neighborhood, so many Spring Creeks in this little area. We're directly north of Hawthorne Ridge, which is the D.R. Horton project. And then we're east of Mount Hope Road, so some of those larger executive ag lots that you find on Mount Hope Road as you travel into downtown. So thinking about zoning, the property right now is undeveloped, so the default zoning is always ag, that's not a surprise, that's what it usually goes to. North, the property is guided for a low-density single-family, R-two PRD. South, it's, it varies just with the location, so most of it is Hawthorne Ridge, which is R-two and single-family. Uh, west of this project is Spring Creek, which is R-two PRD. And then, uh, east again is various just with different large ag lots. So thinking through the site plan, so there's a lot of detail on this, I'm gonna talk through it several times, so if you feel like there's a detail that I missed, hang on, I might talk about it in a later slide. But on the site plan right now, you see the twenty-four single-family lots that are proposed in the Brookview development. There are a couple things I wanna call out now. You may be asking what this strange little T is, that's Pond Access Maintenance, we're a public services team. So this is a black top strip that allows for public services to get into the pond here. And then I'm gonna talk a little bit about this trail connection a little bit later in the presentation. So, we see right now two cul-de-sacs, this is an extension of Mulberry Lane running north-south, and then Brookview Court is the east-west street. A colored rendering is on the screen now, so this came a little bit after the packet went out, so I wanted to share this with this group. So you'll see on the screen that colored rendering of some landscaping on the site as well again, as those twenty-four lots that we'll be talking about tonight. So let's talk a little bit about process, how did we get here, what happens, who's looked at it, what do we think so far? So, I'm going to review as our development review team at the city as part of the planning process, so that group is planning, administration, engineering, public services, fire chief and fire marshal, the city attorney and the legal team, and the watershed district. So, at a staff level, the things we are tasked with as a group is entering compliance with the zoning code, engineering and public services design standards, the fire code, Minnesota state statute, our comprehensive plan, additional policies that we've adopted. So, this group looks at these plans several times, I'm gonna talk through it on the next slide. But largely when I talk about our review team, it's all of these people as part of our team, uh, and either staff or consultant level for the city. So the planning process, let's talk about how we got here, so first, obviously, a developer comes in with a concept, a concept can be a really rough sketch. We typically don't require any engineering, so a project can come in, uh, and we can talk about it. So, a developer can ask that we sit down and think about their project, so first staff does a review, and we provide a comment letter back. So we say, yes, we think this will work because of X, Y, Z, or no, this doesn't work because of X, Y, Z, or maybe, figure out these ten things and we might be able to get there. So we've been through the concept phase with this project that happened in October, the planning commission level. So the developer came in, staff reviewed their project, we gave them a comment letter, we had a pu- a planning commission and a city council review of the council plan. So now we're at the preliminary plat stage, so if you think about the time from October to February, you might be thinking, oh, maybe they're, we're just really slow workers. But the truth behind that is that we go back and forth usually three to four times on a version of a project. So, the developer comes in with a version of the project, city staff is able to create a comment letter, ask them to fix everything that we need them to, to be able to hit city standards, and we go back and forth in that process three to four times. So prior to the planning commission seeing it, staff has worked pretty hard to get it to a point where we believe that it does meet the specifications that we need it to, based on things like the zoning code, standard detail plates from the engineering department, uh, feedback from the fire chief, a legal review by the city attorney. So at that point, we noticed the public hearing, which I suspect most of the people on this call got the notice, that's why you're joining tonight, which we appreciate. And tonight, we're at the public hearing phase, so, again, we take public comment. What happens after this meeting, city council does the same review, if the developer chooses to move forward with final plat, we again do that same review where staff goes back and forth a few times to determine if the project meets our specifications, and work through questions with the developer that we have. So what's the role of the planning commission, what are the things that we specifically look at as a group? So, chapter forty-two of the city code defines our process, so it lays out the sketch plat or the concept plat, preliminary plat, final plat, and then things like the park dedication and improvements are included in this chapter. Once we get through that process, we jump to chapter fifty, which is the zoning code, and that sets all regulations, so things like setbacks, um, size of lots, um, what people can and cannot do on their property. And then we also review the comprehensive plan, so I'll talk about that a little bit in a couple slides too, what that matters and means to this property. So some development details at this point, this is the preliminary plat again, and it's proposed by Manley Develop- Manley Development, so Manley is not a home builder. So once the site is through the planning process, or through preliminary plat, and through final plat, it's anticipated that Manley will sell to a builder. The builder is not known at this time, a good example of this that we saw recently was the Timber Creek project, so if you think about Summer Gate, they were the developer, and they sold to Lennar. So we saw Casey from Summer Gate at these meetings several times, and then now for construction, Lennar is completing work. Engineering was completed by Samba Tech, and again, the project detail is twenty-four single-family lots. And something I'm pretty excited about, and we'll talk about later, is the trail connection to Broadway, so I'll talk through that collectively. So I talk a lot about the comprehensive plan, what does it mean, what does it do? Going to pretend that I have a really interested audience in some of this, so we can do a little bit of education, sorry if it's a little bit dry. So, the comprehensive plan is worked on every ten years, and it sets our guidance right now until twenty forty. So we take a look at every single property, both in the city of Carver, as well as in our growth area, and we decide what we think the development will be. So that ranges from things like low-density single-family to a heavy commercial user. So the map on the left right now shows several different colors, the circle in the middle is obviously the project we're talking about tonight, Brookview. And the really light yellow, it's a little bit tricky to see on the legend, but it's low-density residential, so we believe that this property will develop low-density residential. So what that means for density, which I'm gonna talk about, hold, again, hold on tonight, for our low-density residential district, we need to hit three to five units per acre. So to meet our comprehensive plan, the minimum is three for this property. Things that are excluded from this calculation are things like bluffs, which are important on this property, right-of-way, so streets, and water bodies, so if there's ponds, rivers, streams, any of that gets netted out. The map on the right shows the constraints map, or areas of the city of Carver that we know cannot develop for one reason or another. Obviously, this property has bluffs, so everything in yellow is determined to be a bluff, so the buildable area gets a little bit smaller for this property. So what else does this mean, what does the comp plan tell us, what do we know about this property? We know based off the constraints map, that the site does have developable land, it will develop for single-family housing, and the owner has property rights to develop. So, the density for this project is at three point eight units per acre. I'm gonna ask that if anyone at home is trying to do really fast math, that you slow down a little bit, because there is some nuance to the calculation that you might be doing. So if you think, uh, twenty-four lots sounds like too many, let's go down to fourteen. Remember that removal of lots increases that buildable area, so if you take out a lot, that space is still buildable, and we need to include it in the calculation. So if you take it down by ten, the buildable area increases, density may no longer hit that three to five units per acre, which is required. So talking through the lots a little bit, so on the far left is a breakdown of the twenty-four lots, so you'll see, um, block and lot information, the center column is square feet for each lot, and then the far right is acreage. So, you'll see that the lots vary, at minimum, at five thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet, and the largest is about fourteen thousand square feet, so there is a range. Something to think about is that the minimum that they're asking for is five thousand five hundred, but the lot average that they're looking at is seven thousand nine hundred. So it ranges between those two numbers, pretty, um, it's a, it's a big range, but the average again is at seven thousand nine hundred. For reference, straight R-two zoning is seven thousand, so the average lot size here does meet and exceeds the requirement of R-two zoning. The setbacks are another thing that we'll need to talk about tonight, so for R-two, it's a twenty-five foot front yard setback, checks the box, rear yard setback is twenty, checks that box, side yard is where they're asking for a little bit of a change. So instead of the adopted seven point five for side yard, they're asking for a reduction down to five, and the corner is ten feet, so it just gives you some more space on each corner lot. So, let's talk through that rezoning request, what does it mean, um, how do we do it, what's some of the technicalities behind it? So the request tonight is a rezoning request from agriculture, which again, is our default zoning, not a surprise that this property is ag since it has not developed. And their request is to R-two PRD. So, the stars on the screen right now show every neighborhood that has that same zoning. So R-two PRD is our, uh, the most used zoning definitely for our residential district. I'd say most people on this call, unless you live in one of the new D.R. Horton projects, probably lives in a house that is owned R-two. So not an uncommon request, something that we see pretty regularly as a group, something that has worked really well for the city of Carver for various reasons. I'm gonna talk through what a PRD means, and why we use it on the next slide, but just wanna give you a feel that most of the city is that R-two PRD zoning. So, what is a PRD, why do we use it, when do we use it? I could read through this, but that would be terribly boring, so I'm going to highlight only the portion in red. So, uh, PRD is the benefit resulting from the planned residential district, including an opportunity to protect and preserve valuable natural resources. So I'm going to talk a lot about the bluff, but something to keep in mind is that a PRD works for preservation, and it helps preserve areas that we know are important and valuable in the city of Carver. So this project, how does it compare to other projects in the city? So we have several similar throughout the community, so right now on the screen, I have highlighted a couple of projects that have asked for that lot reduction. So, minimum lot size for Meadows at Spring Creek, which is a property just north, is six thousand, not terribly different from the request of five thousand five hundred that Brookview is looking for. Oak Tree is another example, along Jonathan Carver Parkway, their minimum, or sorry, their minimum lot size is sixty-four hundred square feet, again, not a huge departure. And then River Bluff Estates on County Road Forty, uh, actually has a reduction down to three thousand eight hundred square feet. So these Brookview lots are in line with several other communities in the city of Carver, closely aligned with Meadows at Spring Creek, which is a property just north of the Brookview property. So the site plan again, just so you can get a refresher of what we're talking about, shows the twenty-four lots, access for pond maintenance, and then the trail down to Broadway. And then the preliminary plat, so I know the planning commission does a lot of work with the preliminary plat, we're familiar with this document, but what this means for you, uh, those of you who might be new to the process, this is the document that gets recorded, it lays out the neighborhood. So, this is where, this is essentially the document that creates the neighborhood legally. So at this point, lot lines are created, streets are created, outlets are created. So this is the formal plan review that we're looking at tonight as part of approval of Brookview. So, site access and streets, let's keep moving. So there's been some questions about site access, and how it would be possible to have so many lots on a property without thinking about the safety. So, like I said when I mentioned our review team, that includes the fire chief and the fire marshal, and they review all developments to make sure their largest apparatus is able to get in and out of a site easily. So what that means is that a cul-de-sac usually needs to be ninety-two feet across, which is something that I didn't think I would ever know that I do in this profession. Or in Oak Tree, it looks a little bit different, though there's a median, that the fire truck can cruise around. Review has also been completed by our engineering department, and I would note that several cul-de-sacs in the city of Carver have more homes than Brookview does. So we've approved several cul-de-sacs or other projects with one access, that's not out of the norm. It has been looked at by the fire chief, the fire marshal, the city engineer, checks our boxes, it is safe, we are able to get the apparatuses that they would need to in and out of the site. And there's been a couple comments about Brookview Court being private, which is strange and a little bit different, happens a couple times in the community, there's one in Oak Tree, uh, River Bluff Estates, Walnut, uh, just to name a couple. So, Brookview Court, it could function as a public street. What that would require is that the street would be six feet wider, so it would take six additional feet of right-of-way, which would reduce outlet C, which is being used for landscaping. So if we said tonight, Brookview Court, we don't want it to be private, we want it to be public, it fits there, there's just not an opportunity for as much landscaping and buffering for the properties along Green Ash Drive, which has been a discussion, uh, that you probably saw in the public comment. So, the reduction down to that private street actually allows for a greater buffer and more landscaping and screening. That's one of the benefits of a PRD, is that there's some flexibility in what we can do with the streets. Again, the cul-de-sac that's proposed is a minimum of ninety-two feet for the largest fire apparatus that we would need to get into Brookview. Another question that we've been talking a lot about is bluff protection, I know that Jim is probably our resident bluff expert, but we can talk through it and he can give any clarifying information if need be. So, how does this work with plat approval, what does it mean in our city code? So what we typically do for bluff development is we put the bluff area in a conservation easement, and the area to be protected includes two twenty-five-foot setbacks, so there's a tier-one buffer and a tier-two buffer. So as part of a grading plan, the developer needs to determine where a bluff is, and show us where those two buffers are, to make sure that no construction happens within that area. Brookview is not requesting a variance from the city's bluff ordinance, it does meet the ordinance, it meets the intent, we're able to conserve the homes without impacting the bluff. So, to make that a little bit easier to see, I know it's tricky on the plans, you can close one eye and get really close, but it's still sometimes hard to figure out. So the green on the screen, oof, that's a bad rhyme, the green outlines where the bluff actually is, and then those two setbacks are in blue and yellow. You'll see that the, um, yellow line gets, it gets pretty close to some of the houses, I'll be the first one to say that to you. But, there are opportunities that we have, and options that we've used successfully in other projects. So, when you look at the property, like Lot Four, which is this one here, you're wondering, how the heck does that work, that bluff hits that house? So I wanna talk through what that means on the site plan and the plat. So the square that is on there is the buildable area, that does not mean that the house will go there, it means that that is the space they have to construct any type of improvements. So if someone wanted a house and a deck, the house obviously would need to sit a little bit forward, the deck cannot encroach into that line. So that is the buildable space that they have. Anecdotally, I will say, most surveys that I look at, the house does not touch that back setback line, because people want backyards, they wanna have some space back there, the opportunity to have a deck. So that square that's on the site plan and the preliminary plat does not equal house location, it just shows where a house or some type of improvement could go. So on the screen is another, on the right is, uh, the right, sorry, the right shows that, so where the building pad, there's the line where a house might sit, with that additional space that you could allow for things like a shed, a deck, a patio that someone might wanna construct in that area. So how do we manage the bluff, how do we know that people, uh, are informed and they're not out, they're digging in their yard in spaces that they're not supposed to be in? The first thing we try to do is, we try to work with the developer on homebuyer education, I know that's tricky, because homebuyers are often trying to make a sale, and they can say things that maybe aren't true, but we do try in earnest to work with homebuilders to say, hey, please do not sell this house that they could have a forty-foot deck off the back of their house, because that bluff is right there and we cannot permit that. We also mark the bluff with signage, so before you buy your house, it would be marked with a sign. And we require topography on all surveys submitted with a building permit or a zoning permit application. So, when a new house comes in, that information is on every survey. Uh, I personally check them to make sure that the house is where we think it's going to be, the grading generally works. And we also, if we know that there's a bluff on the property, it's called out, so I can tell you, yes, that house works, it's not touching the tier-two bluff setback, or no, you need to revise that, we cannot touch that area. So, that's great on paper, it's great in the office, but how does it work in practice? So our building, uh, building inspections team goes out and does the first inspection on a site when a house is being constructed, is a site inspection. What that means is that stakes are in the ground, showing where the house is going to be, they measure it to make sure it matches what's on the survey, so it's another catch to make sure that the foundation isn't the correct. Between the site inspection and final inspection, there's about twenty inspections that are, that our team goes out, takes a look at the property, they know to look for some of these things. Uh, probably my least favorite way that we manage is, is that we hear about it. So it typically just takes us saying no to one property owner, that they can't do X, Y, Z, that they become that neighborhood bluff expert, and they get really fired up when someone is doing something, and we get a couple calls a year saying, my neighbor's working on this deck, how, how is that happening when I couldn't do it because of the bluff? So, we hear about it, we really do. And then we spend a lot of time in the field, our public services team is out there often doing inspections for things like utility work, outlet maintenance, entry road maintenance. So, it's not typical that work can happen in a bluff, just based on some of these catchalls that we have, so, if there's someone in Brookview that is passionate, I suspect I would hear from them pretty quickly if someone suddenly constructs a shed without us knowing about it. And there are other projects in Carver that have bluffs, I know that some of you live in them, so Hawthorne Ridge is a great example of D.R. Horton, so looking at the site, I've outlined the bluff in the same colors. You'll see that the setback here gets really close to those houses, but it worked for Hawthorne Ridge, just because they can meet the requirement of that bluff impact. Other neighborhoods to think of, the bluffs, which is pretty obvious in the name, uh, Carver Creek, River View Estates, and River Bluff Estates. I think one of the best parts about Carver is its topography in some of the areas, so protection of the bluffs is something that we strive for in our city code, and something that we hold pretty near and dear, and something that's important. I know there's been some battle scars over bluff discussion, so it's something that we know is important to the community, we protect it when we can. Talk a little bit about park dedication and trails, um, this is usually one of the more fun things to talk about, so less technical and something that I think people usually get pretty excited about. So, I keep talking about, um, park dedication and trails. As just an education piece, every time a new project is platted in the city of Carver, park dedication is required. So, how are we working on our new island park that's gonna start construction in spring, is the park dedication fund. So, it is a pot of money that can only be used for new parks, which is really exciting, can't be used for, um, boring but important things like maintenance. So, we're able to be creative, think about new parks the community needs. Something else is that we, uh, require four thousand seventy dollars per unit for every single residential project, so when your house came in, if it came in at about the. So when your house came in, if it came in in about the past two years, your developer or builder paid that four thousand dollars to us for construction, and we parks only. On the screen outlined in red is that trail that I keep talking about, the one I'm pretty excited about. And if you look at it, you're probably asking yourself, that's going to be a wild ride if it's that straight. So this spring, we're thinking, we'll get out there, we'll do a field fit for a trail, so we'll go out as a team, find a way that it works best with topography, with minimal tree removal, just so we can preserve the site. So it won't be straight down, because I think that would be a wild ride, maybe a good sledding hill, but probably not good for hiking. Something else to note, this, um, trail will not be paved, will likely be pretty rustic. So thinking through Hawthorne Ridge, the trails that we constructed there, likely woodchip, I probably wouldn't recommend ever bringing a stroller or roller blades, but a really good connection to get into snake trail in our larger system. So here's a map of our, uh, trail loops that we have now, so the area of Meadows and Brookview, kind of a dead area. There's not a ton of trail connection, you can come out, down Mount Hope Road, but in general, it will connect in this area here. So let's talk a little bit about tree preservation, I know that's been a question, and I'm going to be the first person to admit my staff report did a really bad job at explaining this, so I'm going to try to redeem myself a little bit, and hopefully get, uh, everyone to an understanding of what the tree preservation plan is. So this is what I didn't explain well, the removal of trees that we talked about at about fifty percent is only in that red area. So they were, were required to only survey the trees in the buildable area, so the bluff will not be touched. It is just this area where tree, um, impact does occur, so the red area is the only space. What does that mean for our city code, what are our rules? So section fifty dash two-two-zero, which is in the zoning ordinance, calls for tree protection. So forty percent of trees can be removed for a project? Nope, that's the opposite, forty percent needs to be saved, sixty percent can be removed, sorry. And you'll see on the left that Brookview is proposing to remove fifty percent of those trees. I know that sounds like a high number, it can feel pretty scary, but it meets the intent of our city code. I'll also say that, uh, any tree removal can feel like too much, uh, why would we do this, why would we get rid of such a great resource? And it's tricky, there needs to be, uh, definitely a give and take of tree protection and tree removal. So as part of the plating process, the developer is required to complete a tree survey. So I know a couple of people saw the survey was out there. What that means is that they go out on site and they find every tree that is eight inches or greater, and they tag it. They take the information of the type of tree, the size of tree, the condition of the tree, and then they apply it to their plans to say which trees are going to be removed, which trees are going to stay. So I could go, um, on-site, find a tree with a tag, come back to the office, go to that tree preservation plan. I can tell you the type of tree, the size of the tree, and its condition, based off those two things together. So in that tree survey, nine hundred and eighty-one trees were included, so they were tagged in that red area, so they're over eight inches. And fifty-seven were marked for removal, so it's not an apples-to-apples calculation, since we do it in inches, but just anecdotally, six percent of the trees in that red area are going to be removed. I did a really bad job explaining that in my staff report, I'm very sorry if it made some people panicky. I know tree removal, it's brutal, it's one of my least favorite parts of the development process, but it is allowed, it does allow for construction. It does allow for development. Okay, landscaping and buffering. So the site, um, obviously will require some landscaping, we have a requirement in our city code that each new lot gets one new tree. This property is going above and beyond that requirement, so each lot is getting two trees, so you'll see throughout the site that each lot is showing two instead of just the one required. And then you, uh, you might notice in the landscaping plan that there's a little bit of a gap here, that doesn't mean that trees aren't going to go there, just that they're existing trees that they're using for the buffer, so they will continue the entire route, and it does loop around the entire cul-de-sac, so there are trees here. This does a much better job, uh, showing that, so you'll see trees running throughout. Outlet C, just for buffering, is about twenty-five feet, which will allow for trees to be successful, allow them to mature, allow them to be large in this area. So twenty-five feet of a tree lane buffer here. So wrapping up a little bit, thank you for your patience and your attention, I hope everyone has taken away one tidbit of information, but I just want to talk through what happens, um, after the developer enters this process and they have full approval. So the city, uh, has what we call a developers agreement, which is a legal process that is signed by both the city and the developer. So it's a document that we work with the city attorney on, we all review it, the development review team again, so planning, engineering, public services, fire, we make sure that what we need is included in that document. That document is accorded, recorded against the property, so it stays with the property, it does not leave if the, if the developer leaves, because we need the things, uh, that they said they were going to do to happen usually. And it ties an adopted plan set to the work that they will be doing. So the grading plan suddenly needs to be completed, no matter what happens with the developer or the builder. Something else that should give you some peace with this process is that we hold a letter of credit. So we, the city engineer takes a look at the project, and we determine how much the entire project costs. So things like landscaping, how much would every single tree cost? Uh, utilities, how much is, uh, sewer, water, streets? All of that is considered, and we get to a total of one hundred percent of what the project cost would be, and then the city tax on an additional twenty-five percent on top of that. So the city holds one hundred and twenty-five percent of total project costs in a letter of credit. It's often exceeds several millions of dollars just based on the project size, and we hold that until the project is completed. So what that means is that a developer could walk away, a builder could walk away for X, Y, and Z, but at that point, the city is, continues to hold that money. And we can use that money if we need to complete the utilities. So if a developer comes in, starts the street, says, hey, I'm not doing this anymore, we hold their money, we use it to construct the streets. So at no point will a development start and then just stop. We obviously wouldn't be a home builder, so homes wouldn't be constructed, but utilities would be completed, so streets would be completed. It generally would start to look like a neighborhood where someone could come in as a builder. I know that can feel scary when you, um, think back to two thousand eight, that a lot of homes were started with utilities sticking out of the ground, and then they sat, and they sat, and they sat. But having this letter of credit and the developers agreement allows us to step in and do that work if necessary. So a good catch, um, just in case anything happens, it typically stays with the city for a couple of years. Uh, once the project is fully completed, the city goes through a walkthrough process, so we go through our plans, we walk this, the site several times, make sure everything looks like it should have on paper, and then we enter a warranty period. So the city has warranty for two years on a project usually, and what that means is that, it is standard warranty, so if something breaks, the developer has to come back and fix it, so if a tree dies, that's something that happens pretty often, if the tree is implanted at the right time, we call it out, the developer has to come back and re-manipulate that tree. So between the developers agreement, which lasts for, for the duration of project, which can be anywhere one to three years, we hold that letter of credit, and then we hold, enter that warranty period. So we do have time to let things settle, make sure they continue to work throughout the process. Okay, I'm going to give that the check for my staff presentation. I'm going to ask Kurt and Steve if you want to introduce yourself and give any information about the project over next.
Yes, we can hear you.
It's really hard to hear, we can barely hear you. Does that work better?
There you go, still a little.
Okay, there, okay. Is that better?
Yeah, I think we're gonna fix the ringing, yes.
But I can't hear you guys. Oh, okay. All right. I'm kind of from the technologically challenged era, so computers just really are my forte, so I, I apologize for, uh, I apologize for that. But, but anyway, as, as I, as I said, a lot of people don't really know who I am, so I would just encourage people to, um, just go to the last, um, project that my staff, that my, my team got approved. It was the McCaddy Landing project in the city of Cottage Grove. And as I said, that the senior planner there, Mike Moroson, you're, you're more than welcome to call him. Mike Moroson, the city of Cottage Grove, he specifically mentioned at, at the, uh, council meeting, that he had never worked with a developer or their team that was as willing to work with the adjacent, um, neighbors as what we were. So I, I just want to make sure that everybody knows that we have really, um, we don't want to get stuck in a developer's mindset, so we always encourage, um, input from the neighbors. It always refines our process, it makes our plan better, and, and I just like having any, any development that we do, where we involved, where we involve the neighbors, it just makes it a, a smoother transition. And I know sometimes change is hard to embrace, but I've had projects where people didn't want to see change, and then they ended up building in the new development because they, they liked it better, or their kids had more kids to play with, or I had one couple, it's been several years ago, they met and they end up getting married, one was in the adjacent neighborhood, and they just met out of walking and ended up getting married, so you know, change is not always bad, and I know it's, you know, sometimes it's, it's difficult to take, but as a developer, I want to make this transition as smooth as possible, and I want to hear your input, so. Um, Planner Smith, I'm not sure what the best way is for me to get numbers or email addresses from the adjacent neighbors, but I would like to have a meeting with them, either one-on-one, or maybe we just needed a coffee shop with a group of us and, and, and talk through the plan, so. Um, if you can just tell me what the best way is to do that, we would love to have that meeting. Um, other than that, uh, Planner Smith did such a thorough job, I really have nothing, um, more to add, but I'm more than willing to answer questions. I have my engineer working late here tonight, and, uh, Mr. Steve Prostky, and, uh, he's, he's willing to answer any questions that you might have. We're, we're super excited about the project, um, we don't have a builder yet, but we'll interview builders, and we will have a very high-quality group of builders that will be in there, um, we'll be very selective with the product type of designers. Thank you.
Kurt, thanks for that info, I think that I, sorry, I'll put your information on the city's, um, Brookview project site. So I'll put your name and phone number and email address, so check on that, and if you want to reach out to Kurt, that will be the best way to do it, I think.
Thank you.
Okay, Aaron, um, so what, what kind of questions were you thinking, uh, we'd do before the public hearing? Just some general overview or, um, from the commission members?
Just clarifying questions, I'm not going to ask you right now, just back through like huge project specifics, but if you had a question about slide six, what did you mean by that? This is a time that I just want to get through those clarifying questions.
Okay, I, I, I did think of one, so what is the difference between a public and private street? I mean, I know, but other, other people might not, is that?
Sure, I could take that, but I'm going to give that to Aaron Schmidt.
Sure.
Aaron, do, will you introduce yourself before you start too?
Yep. Good evening, Commissioner, my name is Aaron Schmidt, I am the Assistant City Engineer. I work with staff on reviewing all developments that happen in the city of Carver, um, and see those through, all the way through the construction and, um, acceptance of the improvement stage, so full circle from start to finish, I'm, I'm working with Aaron, Public Services, and the rest of staff to see the developments through, so. Um, to your question specifically, um, public and private streets. So, um, the city of Carver has a standard public street of thirty-two feet wide. That accommodates parking on both sides of the roads, and it's built to what the city of Carver's, um, standards for pavement thicknesses um, and the underlying roadway materials. So, um, a lot of times pu- private streets come in when there's a specific reason where they cannot meet those requirements, so we review those on a case-by-case basis, and if it makes sense, um, we will allow the street to go private. That's kind of, Aaron, do you want to supplement that at all?
So just based on a pri- our site, a street being private or public, that doesn't mean, mean that it doesn't meet the requirements of the fire code. Just means that it doesn't meet our typical city standards, in Brookview's case, they're asking for a reduction to be able to give that buffer for landscaping, so the street is set to private, since they can't reach that thirty-two feet and have a buffer.
That, that also means that the residents are responsible for plowing.
Yep.
And they are responsible for street maintenance, right?
They are, correct.
That would be the, the homeowners association, right, not necessarily the individual residents on that street, or is it the entire? Or DVD, you know?
So we would anticipate a homeowners association.
Okay. That was my main clarifying question, did any other commission members have any questions before we open the public hearing?
I have one question, um. Looking at the pictures, it doesn't really show any parking spots. And if it's a private street and parking is on one side of the street, is there any of those little pull-in spots anywhere?
Not on the street again for the buffer, so we could add those, but it would take into that, so we are hopeful that people would use driveways, but also since there's a limited number of streets on that cul-de-sac, find parking on the one side.
Okay, this is Jim. My question is, is Outlet A, who's going to be responsible for Outlet A?
Outlet A?
Yes.
I suspect it will fall to the city for erosion, but also that trail.
I mean, that's a, that's kind of a key area for the city. I mean, we call it Broadway, you have Broadway M, but it's really a trail. It's one of the nicest spots in the city as far as the view around it, the slopes, trees and everything, is that going to?
Agreed.
I would like.
We would plan to model this, um, similarly to Hawthorne Ridge, where we hold the large outlaw in, or the large space in outlaw to make sure that it's maintained in a way, uh, that meets the requirements, so erosion is minimal, but also allows us to have that trail system both on Broadway as well as the connection.
Aaron, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Um, so I am kind of con- um, concerned about the erosion. If there is a chance that that area gets erode.
Eroded and it falls away. What is the city's responsibility to the homeowner?
Uh, so anything that would happen on private property would be the property owner's responsibility or the HOA.
Even if it's the fact that that just eroded, like out of Outlet A.
The property owner would be responsible.
Okay, I guess I'm concerned about like June of twenty fourteen, there was quite a lot of landscape. Land, uh, sorry, the echo is really bothering me. There's a lot landslide from heavy rainfall. If there's erosion there. If there's erosion there, and all of a sudden you lose that twenty-five feet of buffer, does the city become responsible?
Not on private property.
Okay.
Uh Erin, so Stephanie, just have you come to the question. So, on specifically the uh bluff, right? Homeowner, like the lot size includes the easement, right? But that, the, the fifty feet, right, the twenty-five plus twenty-five, that, that's still their land, right? But not on that, that the bluff itself starts, you know, fifty feet away from those, uh the line, right?
So, generally, yes, the bluff of the tier one and tier two, so that can be within private property, is not available, but if it comes for small guys.
Okay. Yeah, so, so that kinda covers Stephanie's part. Or at least the three, except that the building itself, if it's, the actual yard or something. Any other commissioner questions? Alright, um just a reminder, if anyone would like to make a public comment, please send a chat to the host, Brenda, and then I will uh have her actually call people directly, because that's probably easiest. And then we'll just maybe flip back and forth, Brenda and I, and the person who wants to talk, and then we'll move on from there. So, um without opening the public hearing, uh thank you for joining us tonight, the public hearing on the Brookview project. The goal of the public hearing is to hear citizen comment. Public hearing is not a dialogue with the planning commission members or the staff in the developer, but we are happy to answer uh with follow-up with clarif- clarifying questions or comments after the public hearing is closed. The public hearing should be limited to topics related to the land use application before the commission. We ask residents remain respectful and uh give us a little leeway with the, the echo and uh um zoom. Uh and if comments become redundant, we uh wanna get through this as efficiently and quickly as possible. So, um if someone has already uh mentioned a comment, you, you can uh drop any of off the list or just say that's already mentioned. Uh Brenda, I assume we have some people already ready to go. I'll uh hand it off to you for our first public comment.
Thank you, Chair Welch. First up is Jenna Hunt from eighteen ninety-one Green Ash Drive.
Can everybody hear me saying?
Yes, I can, Jenna.
Thanks. Um a couple of clarifying things on this book that I took, and I started absolutely checking that thing. Right now you said the ninety-two. Um let's see. And looking at your density requirements, you could actually get five of these twenty homes, the way I calculated, so if we can do, you have clarification on that. Uh if we could take four homes, four homes out of that, that would be helpful, I think. Uh the wood chip rail, uh it looks like it's on a forty-five degree slope. Just wanna say no thanks to that. Not interested in that at all. Um how, how is that gonna become a pain? It just doesn't make any sense. Uh the washaway, I think on local forty-five degrees. Um receiving the letter of credit held, is a hundred percent of the letter of credit held at all times? Or, once portion is final, where course, is it paid? Uh so if we can get clarification on that. Sounds like we're gonna get Kurt's phone number for questions. Kurt offered Steve's phone number, and then also Mike Monroe's for the city of Cottage Grove would like to have that as well. Um buffer that you guys talked about, uh in the no parking cases. Um how do we ensure that people aren't parking in the Meadows up in Creek? I think we'd like to know that, and how that'll be answered. So those are just enough that I took on um whatever so far. Um let's see. Okay. So, um thank you for your time, right? Um I did think that we were going to be able to have dialogue, but we'll, um I guess we'll just ask my question and wait for the response. Uh I think it would be interesting to know when we will get the responses to these questions. I don't know if you can clarify that quick, or if you wanna wait when done. Okay, I'll keep going. Um so, since Mr. Manley's here with us tonight, I wanted to start by asking him a few questions. Um I hadn't heard of his ventures until recently, so I'd like to understand a rough number of developments that he's completed in the past. Um also interested in hearing his intent for this development. It sounds like that question's already been answered. Um it sounds like he will not be the homeowner, uh and that it'll be, the lots will be sold out before that approval. I think I got the answer to that already. Uh as a tenant providing a citizen of Carver, I want to ask, uh can we understand the financial risk and implication that could impact my family should there be a default on this project? Public records shows that a development that Mr. Manley had in Scott County went into foreclosure in December of twenty twenty. The development, as information available to the public and online, was very similar in size and scope to the development that's currently being proposed here in Carver. There was a public notice of sheriff's sales due to defaulting on the loan. My question is, what was the result of the sheriff's sale notification of that foreclosure? Does this mean there are no current needs or judgments in your name, Mr. Manley? If there are, can you elaborate on the type of amounts? Okay, so I, addressing the commission, I do have some other questions here for the developer, but um Mike and I, always discuss the whole. Not just because of the poor reputation of the developer that we just heard, well, we didn't hear him speak, he's gonna pass that out, but uh but also based on the facts of an ordinances that govern our beautiful community, the land, the wildlife, and Carver residents. I'll share that this evening. Before I get in the fa- into the facts, the ordinances and statutes, I'd like to share that I'm appalled and candidly disgusted that a letter of recommendation for approval has prematurely been made for this project prior to some required public meeting. Brent, uh in a Facebook post this week on the Carver Life Week, uh February fifteenth, he stated in a response to uh someone named Mr. Stapleton that the city supports everyone's right to oppose or support land use applications. He shared that your number one goal is to read a clear process and pure accurate information with those interested in the project. I have two thoughts here. I wonder how a letter of recommendation for approval had been made before the required public meeting has been held. Further, it is my understanding that the independent land own- land owner, after doing research connected to this parcel, wasn't notified of this meeting, only found out through a social media post a few days ago. This is highly concerning to me, and I'm not even that land owner, nor do I know them at this point. The letter that we did give in the mail, my husband and I, we did that because no feedback had been received to date, the planning commission recommends approving the plan. I am almost rendered speechless. I think you may have put the cart before the horse here. Please don't count on the city keeper for notifying people of important things like this in the future, that is ridiculously antiquated and terribly disrespectful. This is not the definition of a clear process, and to be frank, it is seemingly railroading something through the system with inadequate considerations from not only members of the city, but also allowing the public to have input prior to finalizing your recommendation. I hate to say this, but it feels as though this is being done for the city's own financial gain and your park fund. Don't get me wrong, that was a good part. Irresponsible zoning adopts or variances that create negative impact uh need to be carefully reconsidered in the interest of the community members that have participated in tonight's meeting. I'm imagining, uh, well, I have a lot of feedback here, I'm guessing you'll have a lot more. Um so, with that being said, uh I ask that you read out your recommendation for approval and uh go through with uh reviewing everybody's comments and feedback. Um just one second here, I have to do that. Okay, so. I was going through as you were speaking to make sure that I had my information correct, so um. I received an email yesterday from you, Erin, showing that the people who own this land have invested uh in property rights the city cannot change based off neighbors' preference. Simply because this is the first opportunity that has come through for the current land owner to sell doesn't mean that the city should or is required to make concessions that are not in the best interest of the people in the land. Arriving at this conclusion without public input is unthinkable. Assuming our research's only preference is jumping to conclusions, what if someone here finds something that your team didn't? Maybe we will, and maybe we won't. But it's prematurely refusing to recognize the undeniable truth that the public has the right to indeed weigh in on this proposal. I fully support the current land owner's rights in deciding to sell this property, but please allow us our rights as well. Both Erin and Brent have stated writing that the proposed plan is in compliance with all requirements. However, that is only because variances and adoptions have been made to do so. I truly believe everyone here tonight at Carver clearly knows that this is developable, developable land. And I think everybody fully understands that the current property owner also has rights to sell. Many of us most likely live in a stubbed street located to this area and have anticipated it. I'll speak un- un- to my family, saying that we are okay with and encourage girls in development so long as the plan makes sense and is run in the best interest of the zoning requirements, the natural habitat, the physical and financial rights of current homeowners that are directly impacted. I honestly don't think anyone here is saying, "Never build that there." The general consensus that I've witnessed is that this concept doesn't make sense from many different angles. Here's the issue. There are several adoptions and variances that are being approved to cram twenty-four homes back into that area, which is really tough to wrap my brain around. As I believe many others who are seeing this beautiful wooded habitat next to a bluff zone being turned into an urban-like zoned development. This isn't downtown Minneapolis, this isn't even downtown Carver. Again, people knew there was a possibility of the development in the area, but any reasonable person, however, wouldn't expect the current proposal and layout to be approved. Brent and Erin have both made appeals to the triffician as it relates to this proposal. There's an ancient fallacy that a standpoint or a situation may actually be right, proper, or correct, especially because it has always been that way, or that we've done it before. Uh this is a very dangerous way to conduct business. But before we go comparing this to the Meadows at Spring Creek or any other developments in Carver, Carver for that matter, let's set aside, uh let's set those aside and focus solely on the landing question. Uh am I still being heard? I'm, I'm not hearing an echo anymore.
No, I can still hear you.
Okay, uh thank you. Uh really nice not to hear that echo. Uh okay, so uh before we go on comparing this to the Meadows at Spring Creek, am I still being recorded? I just wanna make sure that this is reported too.
Can you hear me, the host?
...those and focus solely on the land in question. Based on my research and discuss- discussions with other development experts, the land that the Meadows was built on was and is a different topography than the land that this pro- that this proposal would occupy. There is no evidence that justifying any of the vari- variances or adoptions uh because they have been granted to other developments and developments in the past is the right thing to do in this case, or even of great benefit. Why is the commission recommending approval of variances and rezoning that would destroy a wooded habitat that protects a bluff to cram villa homes that are already having a heck of a time being sold, uh with a street running right behind already existing homes wiping out their semi-private lots? It's beyond me. More to come on this in a few minutes. My husband and I selected Carver as our new home and moved here in late twenty nineteen from just north of the cities. Having a small community just far enough uh from the cities to escape the hustle and bustle of the metropolitan life was the most important, single most important thing to us as we uh searched for the perfect location to build our new home. Uh I want to, I wanna dig into some facts and ask some questions. Before I do that, I wanna ask uh and, and whether or not you can respond right now, but I, I wanna ask that the commission commits to redacting the recommendation for approving this until you take into consideration all the thoughts and questions concerning, questions and concerns from tonight's meeting. Um so I'm gonna go into some questions here. Does the commission have the authority to say no to any deviation, variance, exceptions, requests, or anything of the like to standards that govern our city's development processes? I think they do. I think the commission has the power to say no to lot sizes that are smaller than the standard, but please correct me if I'm wrong. You have the power to say no to rezoning requests, correct? Is, uh I was also, I was also wondering if Carver County Land Management is represented in this meeting tonight, but I'll continue. Uh in the published land use document declaration, there's a section that quote, "outlines goals and policies that will guide the location type and intensity of development for Carver." It highlights the diverse landscapes, natural resources, and preservation, allowing people to disconnect from the stresses and pressures of living in the metropolitan area. This totally contradicts what's going on here. Escape the metropolitan lifestyle, I'm afraid. Like I've said before, this zoning is more similar to a metropolitan development, similar to downtown Minneapolis. Am I mistaken? If I'm, how is this different? I'd like to know. Please answer that question. Uh this, the land use declaration also shares that future redevelopment won't drastically change the landscape of the city. There shouldn't be any arguing that this proposal is a drastic change to the landscape that protects the beautiful bluff that wildlife, wildlife calls home. If there is uh arguing that, that's kinda disturbing as well. I'd really like to know how we're defining drastic as it was stated in that land use declaration. Alright, let's talk about the lot sizes. My math shows that at least thirty-eight percent of the lots have been approved for a variance uh smaller than the city's standard. I've always understood a variance to be an exception. Thirty-eight percent in my world, and I think a lot of others, is far more than an exception. So I'd like for the city to clear, uh please clarify what percentage of the lots would require a variance. And as I did some calculations, it looks like uh the averages that are shown, they're skewed uh in these plans, based on larger lots that throw it off. Uh when, uh when I'm calculating averages, I usually remove the outliers. So, uh I'd like to know if that was done when you've, when, when you were calculating the average size of these lots, 'cause it doesn't look like it uh in my research. Um so my, my next question is, if we can create a variance for smaller lot sizes, why can't we re- why can't we create a variance for larger ones? Um next, I'd also like uh you guys to go back and double-check all of your calculations for the square footage of the lots. Uh I did find one that I don't think to be correct. I didn't go through many. I didn't have much more time. I've spent a lot of time on this, this past week. So, uh I'd like for the city to go back and calculate the square footage for each lot and ensure that it's correct. Next, I'd like to reference uh Section fifty dash one ninety-two structures in the city ordinances. Uh based on that ordinance, uh the information in this ordinance, uh and the drawings that you guys provided, the developer and future homeowners will not be able to install or build any sort of structures, patios, hot tubs, storage buildings, et cetera, uh in the tier-two bluff areas. Uh so, if you could answer that question based on Section fifty dash one ninety-two structures and the uh governing information there, please let us know. and the, uh, governing information there, please let us know. Um, next, I'd like to refer, uh, you to two of, there's, so there's three lot number fours. Uh, there's two of them that I think, uh, if you look at the drawings, you'll be able to see, but it appears that they're located directly on the tier two setback line. It doesn't take a rocket scientist or even a land architect to see that the yards are clearly cut off in order to make this bluff ordinance. Are these houses going to be non-conforming to the rest of the houses with the corners cut off? If so, can the developer, this is a question for the developer that I'd like to have answered, uh, can you explain exactly how you intend on constructs, constructing some of these units? As I can almost guarantee you that should this proposal go through as is, there will be several people watching every single move that is made. And if that bluff is disturbed, disturbed by the slightest inch, that could be a really big risk for the city. This is really playing far too close for comfort. Uh, next, I'd like to know, you answer, who should someone report findings to on non-compliance during this project if they are discovered? Next, I'd like to refer to section 50 dash 194, uh, in the city ordinances. This is regarding removal or alteration of vegetation. Removal, removal or alteration of vegetation, pardon me, within a bluff area is prohibited with the exception of listed species. Uh, this, this, uh, section states that no tree in diameter of six inches or greater, uh, can be removed without prior written approval. So, uh, six inches in this, uh, document. Um. With this, I'd also like you to please reference section 50 dash 195 regarding to po- uh, topographic, topographic alterations, grading, and filling. Uh, as I read this, it says that no earth may be moved, it may not be filled, excavated, or, or nor may fill or excavated material be placed in the bluff area. Drainage from property within a bluff or a bluff setback area, uh, may also not be redirected without approval from the city engineer. Uh, I guess it would be reasonable, I, I, I think, to assume that more than 10 yards of dirt would be moved during this project. Uh, questions here, this one's for the developer. Uh, I'd like to know if you could share with us how you plan to perform the excavation of the units while not disturbing the vegetation as outlined, uh, in the standard that I just referenced. I'd also like to know, has anybody checked with concrete contractors as to how they anticipate even setting forms for the foundation for these homes and then backfilling these? Um, my next question, has anyone seen the extra space needed on a lot during actual construction? Uh, based on the verbiage in these ordinances, a few more questions. I always want to assume that the city acts in good faith and in accordance with the law. How will the signs noted on the drafts be installed without disturbance of any vegetation? The ordinance specifically states that no tree greater than six inches in diameter will be removed. If that tree is removed and it's greater than six, six inches in diameter, that would fall into an enforcement issue. This drawing indicates that there is tree, that there is tree removal within the tier two bluff area. The ordinance specifically states that no tree greater than six inches will be removed. Uh, how is this going to be enforced? Uh, with the imprac- in practically close proximities, uh, this is a question for the developer. How can the developer guarantee that no earth will be moved, filled, or excavated from the bluff area? The two-tier buffer in the tier two setback area that's noted, uh, in the ordinance. Again, who should somebody report these findings to if during the course of the project they're discovered? We will be watching. I see a stormwater retention pond in the plan. In the event of overflow, this would create massive erosion of the bluff. At what capacity, here's some questions for you, please note. At what capacity is this storm pond designed for? Where is the water from the private street going to be drained to? Is overflow accommodated for in the plan? And if so, at what capacity? Will it be coming into the direction of the Meadows development? If yes, how will current residents in the Meadows be protected from saturation runoff or prot- or potential flooding? Can you please share with us the details of the landscape plan that includes plans for erosion control and where we can find that for future reference? Uh, next, I'd like to refer you to city ordinances, section 50, 196 enforcement. Uh, this verbiage in summary states that any violation of this section should halt construction. Uh, uh, let's see, um. It also states that it is deemed hazardous to the sensitive bluff area, area of the city. And to secure compliance, the city may proceed under, uh, the Minnesota Hazardous Building Act and that each violation is a separate misdemeanor, uh, and that it could, that it could impact property taxes. And I interpret that as my property taxes. I trust that due diligence has been done above and beyond accepting a letter of credit to ensure the citizens and taxpayers of Carver are protected. You might find that some people's reputation may not be what it looks like on paper. With the well-known public neglect and background of the developer and his past track record for complete disregard of the millions of dollars in judgments, uh, that are pending, I need assurance that my financial future is not in jeopardy. Our property taxes aren't cheap, and I would hate to see them increase because something goes into default based on the patterns that I have found in public record, uh, uh, with this certain individual. I feel that this is a major risk. How will the city ensure the residents that once enforcement is needed, costs will be recovered so as to not become a burden to the taxpaying citizens of the city? Has anyone in the planning commission networked or reached out to other cities in the metro that the developer has recently developed in? And if so, what were their remarks? In summary, these are really difficult conversations. The best things in life rarely come easy. We're fortunate to have you guys representing our community. Uh, the only conceivable reason, however, that my husband and I can muster up is that this is being done for the financial gain of the city, and that is really disheartening to us. That is not why we moved to Carver. I'm reiter- I am reiterating my ask that this proposal be denied immediately and that the members of the commission work in collaboration with land management to advocate for the best interests of this community. Please do your due diligence. Make sure you're working with, uh, reputable con- contractors. I hope you can see that we're doing our due diligence. Hours upon hours have been spent analyzing this plan since notice was received in the mail. We'll continue doing this. You'll likely be receiving testimony from people who have directly suffered at the hands of this developer. We believe and trust in the city planning commission to redact the current letter of recommendation for repu- for approval. Take these questions, comments, and dire concerns of the negative impact the current concept has on the land and the residents of the city of Carver into close and careful consideration before recommending your approval to the city. And my last note is this, and if anybody's fallen asleep, I know I've done a lot of talking. I want everybody to pay attention, really close attention here. After the first meeting that brought forth the news of this possibility to the residents, I emailed several questions to Erin. One of those questions was regarding the cart path in the trail system. Erin's written response back to me, and I quote, "I don't think this is some, uh, let me, I'm going to go back. My, my, my question was, could we turn that cart path into a trail system that would connect into the other existing trails?" Just for clarification. Her response was, "I don't think this is something we would pursue. With sidewalk available along Green Ash, one house away, I think this would be redundant." Here's where I really want you to pay attention. "We also try not to add trails in people's backyards when homes are established. Many people would not be super happy to have their semi-private backyard turned into a trail corridor." You're absolutely 1,000% correct. I don't even, this, this doesn't even impact me. Uh, the, the, the street, it's not going to be behind my house. But I can tell you that, uh, I care about my neighbors, I care about my community, and many people aren't happy. In fact, many people are really sad, they're shocked, I'm shocked. Uh, we're not feeling heard here. The real-life unhappy people you have mentioned in your response could have streets laid into their semi-private backyard, creating disturbances that include but are not limited to noise, traffic, bright lights, and safety concerns with only a set, a 25-foot setback proposed. Please, I ask you to take a tape measure, take it, go behind your house, uh, demonstrate what this looks like from the back of your own home and think about how that feels. This plan does not at all leave a current homeowner with a semi-private backyard, uh, with, that's the same. Uh, I would be willing to bet that these current residents sure as hell would rather have a trail corridor in their backyard instead of a street. In all actuality, however, the vantage point that they had when they purchased their home is going to be destroyed irresponsibly, uh, and that, that's going to have severe consequences on our wonderful neighborhood. So, uh, my last ask is that you please do the right thing, and I look forward to your responses. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna. Uh, Brenda, who's next?
Next is Matt Knoll, 1903 Green Ash Drive.
All right, go ahead, Matt.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Well, thank you, planning commission, for your time. I appreciate you guys allowing me to voice my concerns. I guess I'll kind of start off by saying I'm, I'm pretty sad and Erin, you and I have had some fairly good conversations, feel like we've been pretty upfront. And for you to say that you don't feel like people would appreciate a sidewalk in, in the back of their semi-private backyard, but it's okay to put this street? I don't understand how that's okay. I'm very, very saddened by that. As I've read through this proposal, I have not heard how this development is going to benefit the city other than the park fund or other than a potential wood chip path on an extreme steep sloped bluff that is going to connect some residents to downtown. Did I mention a unmaintained wood chip path? There are several accommodations that are needing to be made for this proposal. I understand that it is the goal of the city of Carver to grow, but this development on this plot of land does not align with the city ex- city's expectations that they have put forth in many of their publications, regardless if it can be made to work on paper. The city of Carver hardly has any wooded lots left. In the mayor's message in January of 2021, she was excited to announce that we were a green step city. She explained that a green step city is a program to help cities achieve sustainability and quality of life goals through the best practices in resource sharing. In my opinion, clearing this lot of its trees is going to, quit, sorry, clearing this lot of trees, rooting, ruining water quality, destroying wildlife habitat is not best practice, especially for 24-home development. One question I have, um, just a little bit confused with the tree lots. The way, um, Erin, you described it as you classified as tree as anything over eight inches. Um, could you, at a later time, we can kind of talk about that. But to me, there's a lot more trees out there that can be classified as trees that are under eight inches. Us residents moved to the city of Carver to escape the metro. We wanted to be able to still have wooded lots. We still wanted the wildlife to venture into our yards, and we want, and we don't want to have the feeling of being so crammed in. This development is taking away from our escape from the metro. The city is the one who created that slogan for us, "Escape the metro," in their land use declaration. This development is not going to allow us to continue to escape the metro. I understand the city is growing and needs to develop land. Growth is inevitable in every city like Carver. We get that. What we don't get is why is the city trying to sacrifice such beautiful, important lot for this style of development? Why is the city proposing to develop on wooded lots versus the alternative of other land that does not have so many implications? It has been mentioned that one of the positives of this development is it's going to connect the Meadows at Spring Creek residents, as well as others, to downtown through a trail. Uh, this has been proposed, you know, to be that unmaintained wood chip trail. What is, what is the purpose of that trail if I can't bring my kids down it in a stroller or on roller blades or on their bikes? I don't understand how that's any type of benefit. After talking with the home consultant slash realtor for MI Homes Meadows at Spring Creek Development, I'm questioning why the city is wanting to bring in more villa-style homes. He advised me that they are having trouble selling villa homes while the single-family homes are being sold extremely quickly. I'm unsure the accuracy of that, but has the city looked into the rate of villa homes being sold? That would be a question I'd like answered, please. I'm not proficient in reading plat maps. However, when looking at the proposed width of the streets, I'm deeply concerned. Mulberry Lane is proposed at 32 feet, as the Brookview Court is proposed at 26 feet. I'm fairly familiar with the size of emergency vehicles, and I understand that the fire marshal and fire chief have reviewed this. If there is a fire in one of those homes, the fire department is going to have more difficult time navigating their vehicles on the street versus a normal width street. Again, yes, by measurement, they will fit on this small road. When you add in darkness, other emergency lights, potential cars parked on that one side of the street, and user error, you're not leaving any margin for error. What if there's an incident that requires an ambulance to leave before the fire truck? Is that ambulance going to be able to exit that neighborhood if there is a fire truck, police cars, and cars parked on that one side? What if one of those homes starts on fire? It will be minutes before the next one catches on fire. Has there been any thought into any type of extra fire protection needed for these homes? When you have a house fire, you have multiple agencies coming to help. How is this neighborhood going to manage those multiple large fire trucks on a street of that size? I understand the fire department reviewed this proposal, and on paper, it may seem feasible for emergency scenes, but in real life, this type of development will have implications on emergency scenes. This proposal is showing that there will be a small buffer of trees and then a street behind the backyards. In some cases, a buffer appearing to be no wider than 10 feet of Green Ash Drive residents. If you drive throughout the city and look at the developments, the norm is for there to be two backyards butting up to each other. Why is this development altering from the norm and placing the street there? I'd like that answered, please. With a street in that location, it means there will be street lamps. Does that mean that the Green Ash Drive residents will now have a street light shining in their back windows and lighting up their backyards? That's another thing I would like answered, please, if that light and sound has been ever thought of for that street. I'm fairly confident that all of the residents that are living on Green Ash are and were aware of the probability of this land being developed. What they were not aware of is the city putting a street in their backyard versus having another backyard. The city of Carver was growing at an exponential rate prior to the pandemic. Now that the pandemic is entering the endemic, we will see that growth ramp up again. The city's going to be extremely busy with numerous projects. Taking on this development comes with a significant risk. It has been told to us that this developer has been upfront about his lengthy list of legal issues. Regardless of being upfront about their past, developers' character and past needs need to be vetted. If a developer's character and past does not meet the standards the city has for its own employees and allow the city to be confident in their ability to complete the project, it needs to be heavily weighed in on the approval process. We were told that if a developer is not able to complete the project, the city would quote-unquote "take over" the project. Is that a benefit or detriment to the city? If it was a benefit, why would the city just do the project themselves? Doesn't the city have a lot higher priorities during our exponential growth than to try and complete a development? Do the taxpayers want the city to be handling the completion of this project versus their numerous other tasks? Residents of Carver should be made aware of the risks the city's taken by even entertaining the idea of working with this individual. To me, this development proposal has a lot of implications in numerous different aspects. I believe most city of Carver residents would agree that the city should and does try and do the right thing. This development is not the right thing. It is not the right thing for the land, it is not the right thing for the city, and it's definitely not the right thing for the residents. This development has a lot of needs. Why would the city want to accommodate all of these needs to make this work? Again, what might look good on paper does not always look good in real life. The city needs to continue to support all of its residents, its infrastructure, and its use of the land and not allow this development to proceed as it currently sits.
Thank you, Matt. Brenda, uh, who's next?
Brian and Chris Johnson, 1897 Green Ash Drive.
Go ahead, Brian. Or Brian or Chris? Uh, you're muted if you're talking. Was it Byron or Brian, Brenda?
Hey, sorry about that, our mute button.
Oh, no, no worries. There, go ahead, go ahead, we can hear you now.
The screen changed and I had to find the mute button.
Go ahead.
First of all, I'm pretty impressed with my neighbors. Um, they've done an awesome job, um, finding out some very important, um, things that I think make a big dish difference. Um, the one thing that hasn't been addressed yet is our property. So we are on lot five, and if you pull up, um, your map that shows the landscape on it? If that's possible? Is that possible to show the map with the landscape and the cul-de-sac?
The color one?
Do you want this one, Chris?
Yes, please.
Okay.
So anyway, the neighbors that have talked so far did an awesome job speaking for us. However, when you get down to Lot 5 where Brian and I reside, you'll notice that we do not have 25 feet of a barrier at all. We really have no barrier. And I just want to reiterate what my neighbors have already said. Just because you can does not mean you should. So what I've been hearing throughout this whole meeting is variance, 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 and really no protection to the bluffs, to the wildlife, and to our personal property and privacy. So I would like to see if, you know, first of all, I'm hoping that what Jenna said happens. They all have great points that this should be scratched and started over. Additionally, I agree. When you look at a developer or somebody that you're planning on hiring, you have to look at the history of that person, and history tends to repeat themselves. And the developer came on today and talked about being a neighbor and listening to us, and that's all fine and good, but I haven't seen any of that in the history. So I think that the developer might have luck with convincing people with what he says and receiving a lot of variances, but it appears to me that all of these changes and variances end up in a lot of lawsuits and judgments against the person. So the main thing is for us to, if this did end up going through, we need a buffer. We have just been completely intruded upon. I'm sorry. And we had sent a map in with some recommendations with property lines. You guys have property number one intruding and infringing right across our backyard, which is completely uncomfortable and is not going to promote very good neighborly camaraderie. So there's several trust, sorry? I can't understand. But anyway, I've sent our map in with review, and from what the other neighbors had said with the variances and the small lots infringing upon the bluff, clearly Lot Floor, Lot 4, there's no room. I mean, and just eliminating Lot 4 or Lot 3 would make room for a cul-de-sac if the whole thing isn't just thrown out and started over. So I would just request that you review especially the infringement upon our property with the cul-de-sac, where there's really no buffer. Do you have anything else? That's all we have. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Brenda, who's next?
I received a message from an Alyssa. Is there an Alyssa that's interested in speaking?
Yep, I'm here. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, I am. Can you give me your address, please?
Yep, I'm at 1909 Green Ash Drive, so I'm on the corner lot. So thank you, everyone, for your time this evening. Really appreciate you listening to us and our concerns. I have two primary questions. So the first one, it was mentioned that Kurt, with being the developer, he is in the process of interviewing builders. So my question would be, once a builder is on board, would this plan potentially change again, or is this the current state that the builder would take and run with? So want to get clarification on if the builder that comes into play, if they have power to change it. Another question would be, since we are on the corner with Mulberry Lane bordering our lot, I anticipate people will be parking on our side of the street since there is going to be limited parking on the private drive. We also have a fire hydrant in our yard, or yeah, on our yard, so wondering if there is exploration of adding no parking signs on Mulberry Lane bordering the 1909 house, because we know people are going to do overflow and try to park there. So want to know what protection will be in place there. And the question about the street lights that Matt brought up was something that we were curious about as well. Where those would be placed when you're looking at these maps or what side of the street, since that could just cause some disruption as well. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I guess maybe if anyone's new to the call, if you're on the public and would like to comment, please send a chat to the host, who is Brenda. Chat her your name and your address. All right, do we have someone else, Brenda?
I received a message from a Patty. Is there a Patty that is interested in speaking?
Hi, that's me.
All right, go ahead, Patty.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thanks for letting us all weigh in. I live in Bloomington, and I'd like to introduce myself to the neighborhood because my parents have owned a property there in the city of Carver for like 62 years, and they've been waiting to build a house on it. So this is very exciting for us. We are the property owners right down on the bottom here.
Patty, I'll point it out on the map if that's okay with you.
Sure.
There's this property here. I appreciate your commitment to it, though.
Whatever, hoping to help out. It's just way down here south of the cul-de-sac of whatever this, yeah, Mulberry Lane. Okay. So, like I said, we're excited to build a couple houses down there. I made this artwork of the area showing our property here, which is about one acre of flat land and then about two acres of bluff. And our intention is to keep the bluff land all natural. And we've got about 50 mature trees that we're going to keep all of them, and we're going to keep the existing elevation, so it's going to be very natural. Everything seems to be pretty good to me. I have a few minor concerns about wondering if the wood chip trail would hold up because it is on a slope. And of course, we really should stay off the bluffs because when you walk up and down them, it can erode. So therefore, I'm thinking if you could build a cement stairway, it would be, people could kind of get up the hill without damaging any of the soil, and none of the rocks would gradually fall down towards, you know, Broadway. I do have one other concern, and that is the elevation of the cul-de-sac. I was just looking at the grading plat, and I noticed that they're going to elevate this cul-de-sac by about seven feet tall at its tallest. So if you so awkward. If you, where did my, okay, so if you look at my artwork, oh, well, forget it. Anyways, the cul-de-sac is going to be about seven feet taller than, than, than the existing grade. And the bad thing, we're just hoping that it doesn't cause any water to pool on our property, you know, because right now, our bluff land is 938 feet high, and it's the highest elevation on the whole area. But once they build up the road, Mulberry Lane, then it's, we're worried that it, we want to make sure it doesn't create any type of, you know, like berm or dam that blocks the natural flow of water away from the bluff and north the way it used to go. So we are in talks, and it sounds as though we'll probably be able to get a swell put in to divert the rainwater away from the bluff and make sure it doesn't pool on our land or doesn't erode the bluff area. So I think that that pretty well covers it. We're excited to be your new neighbors and look forward to that coffee that we are going to have with Kurt and the gang. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Brenda, who's next?
Next, I have Charles Duck, 1935 Green Ash Drive.
All right. Yes, we can, Charles. Please go ahead.
So my one thought slash question on this whole thing is that between Meadows and this project, we put hundreds of thousands of dollars towards the park fund, but there's no park in either neighborhood. I realized when I moved in, my 12-year-old said, "Dad, this is a neighborhood kids go to die in" because there's nothing for a 12-year-old to do. The closest thing to do anything is QuickTrip. And I don't want my kids hanging out on QuickTrip all day long because that's a cross-county road, and it's a very busy county road. I was wondering if there'd be any way to put like something like two swings and a slide or something behind one and two on Mulberry, where there's a little bit of flat land or something, just, I mean, if we're going to put hundreds of thousands of dollars towards the fund, we should at least get something back. And I love the fact that you guys want to connect all the trails, but there is literally nothing in any of these neighborhoods to do if you're under 12. Thank you.
Thanks, Charles. All right, Brenda, do we have another person who'd like to speak?
Yes, next we have Zane Dai, 1899 Green Ash Drive.
All right, Zane, go ahead and say something so we make sure we hear you.
Something.
All right, there you go, Zane.
All right. Hey, everybody. Nice job on bringing down the echo on the Zoom. I really appreciate it. But I have two main questions. One is, it was mentioned earlier that any subsequent damage from the bluff due to erosion or what have you is going to be the property owner's responsibility at the end of the day. And my question is, how is this going to be communicated in advance to a potential buyer? Because if it were me, I wouldn't buy a property that's a few good rainstorms away from being heavily damaged and therefore my problem. So I'm concerned for those property owners in advance. And my other comment is, the density of the homes seems to be a little heavy-handed. And my question is, what's the average lot size? If you take the three outliers, like the 14, 12, and 10,000 square foot lots, if those are removed, what's the average lot size? I kind of get the impression that there's a minimum number of units that's required to be able to turn a profit for a developer. And I realize that the supply chain issues due to the pandemic has really made this a lot worse. But I don't think this size and shape and layout of land is really amenable to a minimum in the mid-20s. I'm kind of agreeing with everybody else that it might be best to put a pin in this project until either material prices come down enough that a smaller number of units is enough to make a profit, because I get it, people don't build homes for fun. But it seems like this is a very inopportune time in terms of building material costs, and that is driving very high density on an area that is not really well-suited for that level of housing. That's all I had.
Thank you, Zane. Brenda, do we have someone else?
Next, Bill Wagner, 1917 Birch.
All right, Bill, go ahead.
Hey, guys, can you hear me okay?
We can.
Great. So my wife and I care and live on Birch Street. You know, basically, what we are experiencing today is pretty much all of the construction traffic drives right by our house. And, you know, we were really looking forward to this summer for everything to be pretty much done and wrapping up, but you know, something like this going in, now we got another year, two years of all the construction traffic going down the road. And I already know, I can already see the seams in the road where it's, you know, starting to wear. And, you know, you bring down all those cement trucks again. So, so, you know, I just don't like that stuff because right now we can't even have the windows open because of all the dirt and dust. But, you know, I guess for my comment, just because I grew up in a family with a lot of construction and doing a lot of family projects in the Scott County area and stuff, I am so surprised that this, that basically you guys are even entertaining this for how many variances I keep hearing about in the short time that I've been on. And you guys have the ability, the same way if I came in to say, "I want to build a liquor store in Carver," or if I wanted to go and build a pizza place in Carver, you would come in with the same thing to squash it in five seconds flat. Whereas with this project, with all the stuff that I'm hearing, I'm just so surprised why it just isn't squashed. Like, why are you even entertaining it? So that's kind of one of the questions that I have, but I walk the streets all the time, and I love going down on the paths and everything else like that. And I walk probably eight miles a day. I just love to do it. And I really want to say that I really do appreciate Patty, your property down there, because I do go by it all the time, and I occasionally see coyotes there and everything, and I think it's just fantastic. But the problem I got is that when you are walking during the wintertime, you pretty much have to walk the street because the sidewalks aren't exactly all that well taken care of with regards to the paths and everything. So earlier, when I heard the comment that, hey, what's going to happen is that this area is much narrower, this street. And right now, if you look at how the city ends up plowing Green Ash Drive, you already lost about six feet on both sides. So the comment about the fire truck coming down to go and take care of a fire during wintertime, when the street really isn't all that well plowed, I think that actually holds a lot of water. And we see that today, right? I mean, it's a very narrow path down Birch Street because of the fact that it's not plowed to the corners, right? It's not plowed to the sidewalk. So this little narrow path that's going to go into this new development is going to be much smaller, right? I mean, that's just the reality of it, right? Okay. So the other comment was, hey, there's going to be this path, and it's going to have wood chips on it. You know what's going to happen as soon as that first monsoon spring rain comes, or the heat of the summer triggers a July storm, and it dumps two inches, three inches of water, four inches, and you know that's just going to all come right down. And I don't think that that path, you're not going to be able to use it during the wintertime. So I don't know what good that is. To me, there's no advantage to that whatsoever. So, so I mean, that's in and of itself. But then the other comment I had, and the last real comment was the variances themselves. And I guess it really does go back to some fundamental basics, and that is that why, why are you entertaining this particular builder who just doesn't have any good track record? It reminds me of the early days of the Klingelhut development that took place in Chaska, where there was only one entrance for the entire development on the county road, and subsequently, the whole place got built up, and there's still only one entrance. So that should never have happened. And I'm not saying that this is one entrance in here in comparison, but the reality is, is that if you allow these type of variances to happen and take place, you're going to do it elsewhere, and you're going to set a precedence, and that is something I don't think you guys want to do. So, thanks. That's my two cents.
All right, thank you. Brenda, do we have someone else? All right, thank you. Uh, Brenda, do we have someone else?
Next is Sean Royer, nineteen nineteen Green Ash Drive.
All right, Sean. All right, there you go, Sean. Go ahead.
Hear me? All right. Yeah, I appreciate all the neighbors, uh, that did a lot more homework than I did tonight. Uh, and I just wanna say, Patty, I appreciate the, uh, the artist drawings. Those are, those are fantastic. As I'm looking at, um, at some of these maps, I just have one question that I'd like answered. I'm at nineteen nineteen, and it looks like the, the sewage, the storm sewage will be connecting right into our backyard. And I'm just wondering how that will happen without, you know, having to tear up the entire backyard. So like that addressed, and then the, the other concern that I do have is the erosion control for the backyards of the bluffs. So I'd like to just enter that into the record, and that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Uh, Brenda, who's next?
Next is Jim Donadio, nineteen oh five Green Ash Drive.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Jim. Go ahead.
Um, I do have a couple of questions that I've asked, and, uh, I'd like to just ask them now for the public record. Um, one is the PRD ordinance requires a fifteen percent open space, common open space as part of it, its requirement in the ordinance. And I don't see that here. I'd like to have that addressed. Um, I do have a question regarding whether or not the product is gonna be single-story slab-on-grade, uh, or is it gonna have basements? Um, I have a couple of comments about, uh, questions about the HOA or, or the city gonna do the maintenance on things like the stormwater pond and the private drive. And what the city, if the, if the HOA is gonna be responsible for the maintenance of the private drive itself, uh, road maintenance, uh, what assurances do you have that that road isn't gonna get busted up uh, and repaired by the low bid, uh, that the HOA is gonna go to? Uh, and the same would be true with the stormwater pond. That stormwater pond, its location is ripe for erosion of the bluff. Um, and then my, by, my, my comment echoes my neighbors, and that is that it seems that, uh, the, the city is doing everything in its power, uh, to, uh, cram this development into this, into this, into this parcel. And I wonder whether that's the best use for this parcel. And applying the PRD is meant to give the city the flexibility to preserve certain things. And it seems that, uh, the city is getting a substandard trail access. Wood chip trail is not a trail access by any means other than it's there. Um, especially if it's not gonna be maintained by, um, you know, to any kind of standard. And we're giving away an awful lot to this developer, uh, in the form of, uh, very, very small lots. Um, there's nothing that says he can't meet seven-and-a-half-foot setbacks. He just has to build a smaller home. Uh, he could, he could bit, meet a ten-foot setback and build a really small home. Obviously, that's not what he's gonna try and do. He's gonna try and build the largest home possible, uh, corner to corner, edge to edge. Um, and I just, I just, uh, think that there are better uses of this parcel than to cram this many homes. Uh, I, the last comment I'll make is, is, um, is to clarify, 'cause I have some experience that when you talk tree removal, you're talking about significant tree removal, which is the eight-inch caliper diameter at chest height or larger. And that in this case, there's a lot, a lot of trees that are gonna be removed that are, that are below that significant definition. And, um, that's a, that's what I have to say. Thanks.
All right, um, thank you. Uh, Brenda, who's next?
Next is Brad Kerber, nineteen hundred Green Ash Drive.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Uh, thank you for listening to us and let me chime in here. I think first and foremost, I, you know, the comments I wanna make is, looking at this plot map, you know, my perception of it is, and I think everyone can agree with me, this particular development is, you know, it's being built at, for the benefit of the new development. You know, at the cost of being detrimental to the existing homes. And, you know, I would like to challenge you, the city, I'm a developer, to, you know, come up with an alternative plan that would, you know, better benefit both sides. Um, you know, and I'd like to see what that would look like. I, you know, my fear is, you know, maybe I'm being selfish, but the, the home values in the area. You know, basically, I reached out to a Realtor friend of mine. You know, he said having a neighboring yard in the back of your house isn't as big of a deal as having basically locked in by two roadways. So, you know, kinda reiterating my first, I'd like to see, you know, a variance to that. You know, so it doesn't impact the values of the, the existing homes as much. Um, 'cause I see they're in a beautiful views in the new homes, but, um, they're gonna be taking away from the people that have already, you know, committed to Carver and have, you know, planted their, you know, feet in the ground. Uh, I'd also like to know a little bit more about what these homes are gonna look like. I know Jim mentioned this a little bit, but what's the pricing gonna look like? Are these gonna be slab homes, two-story homes? Um, what's the quality of these builds? Uh, another thing too is the HOA fees. I'd like to know a little more about that. Um, simply being, when you have a neighborhood that has an HOA that's maintaining more than just their yards, their driveways, but they're also maintaining a private street. Um, you know, the payoff of having an increased HOA is you potentially could decrease the value of the home itself. Being that these homes are, you know, closely connected to us and our neighborhood, that will have a detrimental impact, not, not only on the side, you know, facing the potential Brookview Court, but, you know, along with any other home that is on Green Ash as well. Um, you know, just reiterating too about the street size, um, you know, twenty-five feet seems like a lot. Uh, others have mentioned this as well, but our plows don't do a wonderful job. Um, you get a heavy snow, you're gonna lose three feet on each side. You allow parking and have a vehicle on one side, you're now down to a, a state where it's gonna be detrimental if, uh, emergency vehicle does get in. So I think that's something to be important, uh, mindful of as well. Um, being in an HOA, it's, it's, it's apparent that the snow control is not up to the same standards as the city as well. So that should be taken into account as well. Uh, another thing too, I, I do respect that there is a little bit of a concern with the developer and his, uh, past from a legal perspective. Um, you know, working in the commercial lending industry, I, I do understand letter of credits, and I would like to understand who's gonna be funding this? Is it secured by cash? What is, you know, and what is the, you know, what would that look like in the event where the city would have to, uh, call upon that letter of credit to be used to fund the rest of the project? Um, you know, I, I, it sounds good, you know, from a conversation perspective, but that's a very long, drawn-up process, um, for that to be, to be handled. And, uh, I think that's a concern that all of us have, but, I think that's really about it. I just, uh, I hope the city will, you know, find an alternative that works for everyone. Uh, it is our homes. It's where we live, um, and it's important to us. Thank you.
Um, yes, thank you, Brad. Um, Brenda, do we have someone else?
Next I have Ken Hitzman from one zero five five Broadway.
All right, Ken, go ahead. Yes, we can hear you, Ken.
Perfect. I can't do the Zoom call because I'm the southeast property and I don't have much for internet down here, so I'm joining by phone. So again, I'm the southeast, uh, block on your plot map there.
Okay.
Um, understand that this development was bound to happen at some point, so I prepared myself for that. And once I noticed, uh, how these houses were laid out, I was instantly taken back by the proximity to the bluff in the area that, that, uh, is our natural habitat. Uh, bought this property, uh, to preserve the land, uh, to make sure that wildlife, uh, had a place to flourish around me. Um, it, absorb an amount of taxes in order to have that luxury. Um, and my first question is, uh, house plots one and two, which property lines cross the, uh, boundaries of the easement? The first thing I would want to do, uh, to protect my view would be to put up a privacy fence because I don't want a swing set where I used to walk the fields and look at the deer and listen to the coyotes. And I'm assuming I would not be able to do that because the property line is into the bluff easement. Second question, um, in respect to, uh, the bluff protection, is where's the rainwater going to go? All of the rainwater currently on the east side of this development flows through a waterway that goes directly behind, behind my home, uh, ninety feet down in elevation. And through the years, I've had to protect that waterway from eroding my property through torrential rains and the like. Uh, and I'm prepared to foot that bill uh, as it, as it's currently laid out, and I forked over many thousands of dollars in order to protect that. The first thing that's going to happen with sites one through eight or one through nine is all of the, uh, fertilizer that's planted on everybody's residential yard is going to flow directly into a natural spring, which is just down that embankment, which all the deer and coyotes and, and pheasants and turkey go to drink all winter long. Now it's gonna be contaminated with all the rainwater drain off from these perfectly pristine yards. And when this rainoff duplicates, because we have house lines and gutters that are pointed directly into my property, what happens when my backyard washes out? Where will the city be at that point to help me maintain my property down below? Uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Um, Brenda, who's next?
The last person on our list is Michael Lanetti at eighteen ninety-five Green Ash Drive. If anyone else would like to speak, please send a chat.
Hear me okay?
Uh, yes, now we can.
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you, Planning Commission, and it was really nice hearing from the, some of the other owners that we haven't met on the, the other side of the bluff. And I, I don't wanna repeat too many of the comments. I'll just say that, um, you know, I agree, of course, with the people on the Green Ash and, and the big one being to summarize, you know, and I, I always knew that the, the private property would be sold and developed at some point. That is certainly the right of the owner. Uh, the street right along the backyards, though, that was, that was a shock. I wasn't imagining that, that there'd be a street back there. Um, certainly some properties, but not a street. The other thing, another person brought up, and I wanted to second it, and I, and I, we, we thought about this when we moved in and at various points, and it kinda passed out of memory, but we have young children. A lot of people have young children on our street in our neighborhood and Spring Creek. Very family-friendly, kid-friendly neighborhoods, but there are no parks, um, like the other caller or, uh, resident mentioned. And that's, that's something we, we've wondered too, is we've, you know, somebody did the math on how many park dedications there are, but in the northeast quadrant of Carver, I can't think of a single park. The closest one that I would take my kids is maybe the Lion Park or over by Carver Elementary. Um, which is quite a bit of a, a hike, right? So, yeah, for the folks that live in Spring Creek, Meadows, and some of the other surrounding, where have all those park dedication funds gone? Maybe this is a prime opportunity to think about, uh, a park there, uh, a natural one, um, that could be used in conjunction with the development and reduce the density and impact on the bluffs. Just some thoughts for the, I don't know how much the commission has to influence that, but I, I will say that it does, it does something weigh on us that we've spent all this money on park dedications and we're not sure where those parks are. And there are a lot of children, and a lot of coming children, there's a lot of expecting mothers on our street and area too. So I, I'm sure that'll be a, a big one. But anyways, yes, thank you for everybody that's, um, contributed and, and is part of this process. Um, thank you, Erin, for responding to our questions that we've sent in the mail. I know this is a hard job and it, uh, upsets a lot of people, but, um, appreciate everybody hanging in when they're giving us this forum to talk. But that's all I had. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Michael. Um, I think we're gonna give maybe, uh, I don't know, two, three minutes just to see if anyone else, uh,
One more. We've gotten one more. Chair Welch, I do have, uh, Jenna Eisenbren, one seventeen Third Street East.
Hello, thank you. I just wanted-
Yep, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Perfect, thank you. I wanted to, uh, second, uh, the comments of many of, um, many of our neighbors here. I live further down in the downtown historic neighborhood, so I'm not, um, directly by that. But I believe that what affects my neighbors affects us all. And also I think it's important to, um, keep in mind, uh, the, the, the desires of the people and their concerns. And I appreciate the time that you're all taking into considering the comments tonight. I would also just like to add, um, additional concern for the wildlife of the area. I realize it's not a gigantic, um, area, but it's big enough, uh, to be the home for a lot of creatures that have, uh, a great impact to our community should they be lost forever. Um, that's really all I have. Just please, um, please take these comments tonight that you've been hearing too hard. And, um, yeah, seriously, consider everything that's been said. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Jenna. All right, um, like I said, we'll maybe give another minute or two here to see if, uh, anyone else has something or thinks of something else to say. Uh, I, I just would again, maybe just like to reiterate, uh, all the public for, for putting in their comments. Um, usually our meetings are pretty boring, uh, but, but it's good to have public engagement and that, that's exactly what, what the planning commission's for. And, um, I guess I just commented that I, I've been writing notes down the whole time and, and I, I also have many of these same questions, so I will, I will definitely invite everyone to stick around for the, the active discussion between the planning commission members, uh, afterwards. So, uh, my goal is to, to hit kinda the main points and help clarify your questions for you as well. So, um, like I said, we'll maybe wait another minute or so here and then, uh, close the public hearing and then have, uh, have a pretty, uh, I would, there's gonna be a lot of discussion internally on the planning commission. So again, I would, uh, invite the public to stick around for that. So, I mean, just give me a minute here and we'll see if anyone else has something.
Uh, first, I resent the fact that you say our meetings are boring. I think they're really fun.
No, I meant boring as in good. No.
I think we're getting, uh, one more resident. Just hang on.
Oh, sure. Go ahead. Excellent.
So the resident, uh, it's Peggy Thompson. Peggy, do you mind sharing your address? Just so you don't have to type it in the chat, but before you start speaking, just share your address.
Sure. Um, my family owns that property. That's to the south of Mulberry Court. So my sister Patty commented earlier. Just, is that enough? I live in Bloomington.
Yeah, I think that's, yes, we can. Yeah, that, that's good. Go ahead.
Okay, um, first of all, thank you so much for this opportunity to comment. And I just wanted to make us a couple co- small comments. I really appreciate the people that are thinking about things for the community like park land or park, you know, things like that. I appreciate that. It seems wonderful. The other thing that I wanted to say is that, um, I also, when I look at the future of our community, um, I really wanna say there is something beautiful about small homes. And that's just like, not necessarily, like, I mean, like high-quality homes and homes that are beautiful and all of that. But there's something nice about being in a wilderness-type area. And maybe even if you had lots as the same size as, I think it's called Green Ash. If you had those same-sized lots, but just smaller homes on them, that's fine too. And that's a way to minimize the things like Ken Hitzman was talking about, like the runoff and the things like that, but just environmentally friendly construction in a, in a way that preserves our land and our community that we love. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Patty. All right, um, maybe give it a minute here and see if anyone jumps on, then we'll close the public hearing.
Chair, Chair Welch, this is, uh, David Anderson, the city attorney.
Sure.
Jump in real quick, thank you.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Um, and I haven't met a lot of the planning commissioners, so, um, I'll just introduce myself real quickly. Uh, I'm David Anderson from Kennedy and Graven. I, uh, I'm the city attorney. Um, I just wanted- I just wanted to, to clarify a couple of quick things before we close the public hearing. First of all, just from a procedural standpoint, um, I, I think the way we should do it is for the commission to, um, to make a motion. And second, that motion to close the public hearing and then take a roll call vote on it.
Yes, yes.
Beyond that, um, you know, it's obviously, it's great to hear all of this public engagement tonight. And I, I just want to make sure everybody knows that once the public hearing closes, there are no more opportunities at the planning commission meeting tonight for the public to address, uh, the commission. So, uh, again, this is the, the public hearing portion, which, um, will presumably be, uh, closing soon. Once everybody has had an opportunity to speak, if, if they want to speak. Um, and once it's over, the planning commission will engage in its discussion. Uh, of course, take into account all the great comments and engagement that we've heard tonight. And then we'll, um, make its recommendation eventually, um, on these, uh, on this specific development. So, um, I just wanted to add those thoughts and say that before, uh, things close.
Thanks, Dave.
Reed, it looks like Kristen Johnson has a hand raised.
Oh, okay.
If you don't mind, um, sharing your address again and then go ahead.
Kristen, did you want to have a public comment?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead.
Hi, eighteen ninety-seven Green Ash Drive. So we just wanted to make the comment that we calculated that Meadows of Spring, Spring Creek Development paid six hundred and thirty-three thousand for a park fund. So that would have pretty much paid for the parts of land behind us as a natural preserve. So is there any chance that you guys could look at that as well?
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Welch, I see Jenny has her hand raised.
Okay, yeah. Uh, Jenny, did you have a?
Um, I'm sorry if that's me you're referring to. Um, I.
Oh, no problem.
I do, uh, it wasn't a hand raised in chat. Um, it was the, uh.
It was a spear, I think.
Oh, no worries. Okay.
So my.
Emoji, no problem.
Thank you.
Reed, it looks like Brad has a hand raised. If you could share your address.
Yep, go ahead, Brad.
Nineteen hundred Green Ash Drive. Uh, I just have one last thing. It's just as I'm looking over the plot map here. I guess I'd like some clarification on this at some point, but, uh, just looking here, so it looks like lots one, four, six, seven. Um, quite a few of them. Um, the easement goes basically to the house. So is the expectation that they would not have a deck or a patio? You know, if you push a house back ten, twenty, twenty-five feet. I mean, they'd have a trailer home parked sideways basically on the lots. I'm just curious on how, how they would mitigate that. I mean, I think that's a fairly reasonable thing to ask for to have the ability to have a deck or a patio. But I mean, goddamn near fifteen, twenty percent of these homes wouldn't have the abilities. So, um, I'd just like that answer as well.
Alright, um, let's see, give it, uh, give it till nine, nine at the top of the hour and then we'll close the meeting, I think. Looks about. Alright, um, uh, again, I'd like to iterate and thank, thank everyone for their comments. We're, we're very glad that you took time out of your schedule to, uh, to come and, and, and tell us your thoughts and feelings. So, um, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Alright, thank you, Krista. Uh, do I have a second?
Commissioner Griesinger makes a, seconds the motion to close the public hearing.
Thanks, Stephanie. Um, uh, no discussion, I assume, from the commissioners on the motion? Alright, uh, Brenda, would you please take the roll call vote for the motion?
Commissioner Godal, aye.
Commissioner Monroe?
Commissioner Monroe, aye.
Commissioner Wiegand?
Commissioner Wiegand, aye.
Com- Commissioner Griesinger?
Commissioner Griesinger, aye.
Chair Welch?
Aye. Alright, uh, thank you, everyone. Alright, let me grab my agenda here. Alright, um, so now, uh, I guess maybe I'll uh, do a little talking more than I usually do. Um, yeah, so now the, the commission's going to discuss, uh, typically I have a lot of questions. So I will defer to, uh.
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Go ahead, Erin.
So we typically go through, um, public hearing and answer some of the questions that we can, just so it's part of the discussion. So.
Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah. I had a list. You want to go through your list first?
Yes, please. We'll go through.
Go ahead, Erin. Yep.
This will be a partnership between me, Erin Schmidt, the city engineer, and Dave Anderson, the city attorney. So I tried to take some really good notes, so we'll start cruising through if that's okay. Um, so starting the ninety-two verse ninety-six, I had that information incorrect. It's ninety-two for the feet across a cul-de-sac for a fire truck. Um, I would ask that this group doesn't try to do density calculations just based off that information. Removing lots can either mean you're removing five thousand or twelve thousand feet and the density calculation gets wonky. So I don't want, uh, people to think that just taking a couple lots off, um, just means that that property does not, uh, is no longer buildable. Um, I'm surprised to hear that the trail was such a flop, but I think that's something we can definitely reevaluate based on feedback. I thought it was kind of a fun idea, but we can move on from that, no issue. Um, the letter of credit, I'm going to defer to Dave eventually. But the amount that we hold, it does decrease as the project progresses. So once we deem that a project is thirty percent complete, we release thirty percent of the letter of credit. But again, that number always corresponds with the amount of work that is left. So at no point are we left with less money than what would be required for, uh, construction. A couple of questions about parking and overflow parking. Unfortunately, the street in front of your house is public, so people can park there. And that's a bummer. I totally get that, but we don't regulate who parks where. Um, we do have some information if someone has parked for an extended period of time, but we don't limit who can park where on our public streets. Um, several of the comments were related to the developer and that's not applicable to the land use application, so we're not going to be addressing those tonight. Uh, Carver County Land Management, this project is entirely in the city of Carver, so we use our own standards. Um, the county is, does not require review of this project. Um, a couple of questions about the areas that are buildable. So I know Brad just asked it at the end. The area on the map, that's the square, that's the buildable area. That's not the house location. So if someone comes in and they say it's really important to me to have a deck, they might put their house somewhere different than where they might say, I don't care about a deck, I want a bigger house. So the squares that are on the lots are the buildable area, not necessarily where the house will go. Um, for non-compliance on a project site, so we have a construction engineer on site, um, on all of our sites throughout the summer. So they're out there with our plans. Reed, if you think our meetings are boring, I think that job sounds boring because they literally just watch construction happen and they make sure that everything is just enough. And if it's not, we get a pretty quick message back at City Hall to say they're needing a change in where the sanitary sewer is being put. Let's pause for now. Let's reevaluate. We need to work through it. So our sites are always watched by Bolton and Meg's staff, which is our city engineer. Uh, I'm going to keep powering through, Erin. I'm just creating a list for you, but one to think about is storm sewer. Um, the financial gain of the city, there's, there's not much for us to gain. Um, we get some tax base, but beyond park dedication, there's not much that we gain in accounts. So I'm sorry if that's a misconception. I'd be happy to talk through that with residents that might have questions. Um, so Matt had a question about the trees on the lot. What makes it, uh, significant tree? Jim gave a great definition. So in our city code, it's eight inches in diameter. So again, that's a definition that's in our code that we're required to follow. Um, again, the trail, uh, we can definitely think about that differently. Uh, as a city, uh, we take a project that's proposed, um, off based, based off market conditions of a private developer. So it's not our role to watch the market, determine what type of home should go based on market conditions. Um, street layout, I'm going to defer to Erin Schmidt. There will be streetlights. We do require a lighting plan that shows that there will not be light pollution in other houses. So we can definitely send that over when we have it, but something that we think about in review. We don't complete background checks on developers. That's not our role, not something that, uh, happens in our process. And then Matt had a question about why doesn't the city just construct the streets? So we are held to a different standard that we require a public bidding process. So that often drives the prices up of construction. So a developer is usually able to get a little bit better of pricing. So the city also isn't in the game of construction. We are largely here for maintenance. So, um, like our public services team is not equipped to do street construction. Um, Brian and Chris, privacy, totally get it. I think Kurt has been pretty open to meeting with residents and working with them privately. So if you want to set up a meeting with Kurt, I'd be happy to be there too, if that would be helpful. Um, we don't hire a developer, so a property owner chooses one and they come to us with a plan. So that's not a role that we play, so not something that we vet. Um, Alyssa, a couple of questions about what happens if the builder suddenly doesn't want to do the project the way it's set up? That would require replating, which is the process that we're going through right now. So it would require review by the planning commission and the city council. So it essentially starts over. We would kind of scrap this plan, come back with another. I don't anticipate no parking signs on Mulberry, just because again, it's a public street and people are able to park there. Uh, a couple of people referenced a land use declaration and, um, if someone could send that to me, I'd love to take a look at it. I'm not familiar with it, so just want to know, um, where that came from and what it might look like. Uh, Erin Schmidt, teeing you up again to talk about erosion. Um, Jim had some questions about the type of home. We don't know that right now since we don't know the builder. So once we have that information, we'll absolutely share it with the group, but we don't know things about price or the type of home. It's anticipated that the city would maintain the stormwater pond, so we'd have that access back there and it'd be part of our full system. And tree removal, you are correct. There is quite a bit of just what we call scrub trees on there. So, uh, you are correct with that definition and agree that there will be some additional removal of some scrub trees. Um, Brad had some questions about the HOA fees. Since we don't know the builder, the HOA hasn't been determined, that will be likely, um, builder determined. And he had some questions about drawing on a letter of credit, which I'm going to defer to Dave. Ken, your comments are noted. I'm not sure I have, uh, great response to any of them, but we hear you. Uh, and then there was a couple of questions about parks and I just wanted to talk a little bit about that. Um, so we have an adapted Parks Master Plan. If you have, uh, not checked it out, I recommend that you do. We have some really beautiful renderings of parks that we're working on right now and future parks that we're working on. So our Parks Master Plan was adopted in twenty eighteen and we moved away from pocket parks to more regional parks to allow for greater development of those parks and more of a draw to the community. A big question about, um, what's happening with the park dedication money? The city council, um, recently approved plans and specifications for an expansion of Ironwood Park. So we're investing about a million dollars in an expansion of Ironwood, which is directly adjacent to Carver Elementary. So we're adding, um, a new skate park, so a concrete skate park, a basketball court, a pavilion, an outdoor classroom for Carver Elementary, and then some pretty extensive trail. So, uh, construction of that park is slated to kick off this spring. We're really excited about it. Hopefully it will be a draw for some more people. So stay tuned. Again, Reed was probably going to say this is boring too, but if you want to look at one pretty document that we've put together, the Parks Master Plan is a really good one. Um, it has park renderings that I hope people will find exciting and inspiring. Uh, if you have questions or comments about the Parks Master Plan, I'm more than happy to chat about it. Um, Patty, I think that we're getting to a spot where we're comfortable working with the developer and then city staff to get you where you need to be, but I think we're pretty close. Charles, again, parks question. So we moved to a more regional park system to have larger parks instead of pocket. Um, Zane, really good point. You are right that construction costs are outrageous right now, but it's not our choice to wait for a project if a developer is wanting to move forward. They have that choice. Um, Bill, we've heard from a couple of your neighbors about construction traffic and we asked our deputy in town to spend some more time in Meadows just based on people driving too fast. So hopefully, hopefully that, um, can be a little bit alleviated. I totally get it. Construction is hard. It's hard when you can't have your windows open, but you live in an active construction site, unfortunately. So hopefully it goes fast and everything gets tied up soon. I also just want to stress that a PRD is not a variance, so that's a different process in our city code. So just the two differences, it's a big difference between a PRD and a straight variance. So to get a variance for a property, you need to essentially establish hardship that's unique to your property, where that's not what happens with a PRD. Um, Bill, a couple of questions about setting a precedence with this project. I think in the presentation, there were a couple of precedences that I've already pointed out. And I agree with Jenna that just because history said we've done it once, we should do it again, but rezoning to R two PRD is pretty common for us. Uh, Chris, thanks for doing that math. The park dedication requirement ebbs and flows a little bit for the development. So if someone, uh, installs a park or, um, gives us some additional land, the requirement amount goes down, so it's not apples to apples all the time. But again, um, we have a project page on our website for Ironwood Park. A lot of us are really excited about it. So again, that was about a million dollars that we're looking to spend right now. And then we have some other pretty large parks planned. So we have like a dog park planned on JCP and County Road forty. A really big splash pad planned for downtown. And then in our growth area, we have like a full softball, baseball complex. So we're definitely thinking about these things, working on them. Check out Parks Master Plan. I think that's what I'm, have in my notes. So I'm going to kick it over to Erin Schmidt if you've got some comments.
Oh, uh, oh, Erin, just, uh, don't forget to tell people there is a Parks Advisor Group that is similar to the Planning Commission that has monthly meetings again, right, for?
We're changing the model a little bit.
Oh, okay, that's.
I'll say, stay tuned, but the Planning Commission will be charged with some additional parks planning, so definitely a good group to hear some of that feedback.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead. Go ahead, Erin. City engineer, right? I'm not. Two Erin's, sorry.
Thank you, sir. Um, so yeah, um, when this development was originally, um, when it came in, um, starting at concept plan approval stage, um, stormwater management was probably the biggest piece of this whole development. This, uh, immediately stuck out, um, at a staff level. So, uh, throughout the process, we've worked, um, very closely with the developer's engineer on this project. And what they have come up with is they have an extensive network of both a, a pond and a filtration basin that is going to control the rate of the stormwater that's leaving the site. And then, um, bluff erosion, so discharging water at the top of, of the bluff, like many people have noted tonight, is a very big concern of ours. So, um, what they were able to do, um, they came up with a good solution of routing it through the existing storm sewer system. That's already, um, constructed within the Meadows at, at Spring Creek Development. And then routing it through, um, where that, where that development already discharges into, um, the Spring Creek system. So that was a very big, um, thing that we wanted to do. We want, we didn't want to add another discharge point at the top of the bluff. So I, I feel that that is something that's been a big accomplishment with this project. So that's kind of the storm sewer, um, and stormwater management in a nutshell. I heard a comment about how all the homes, like on the east side of the road are going to just go right down the bluff. And, um, that's actually going to be collected within the, the storm pond system. So we're going to be picking up that water and then route, you know, holding it back and then controlled, controlling the release rate of that, um, through the Meadows at Spring Creek Storm Sewer, as I just described. So all in all, um, I think the development is set up really well for, uh, storm sewer. It is designed for a hundred year, uh, rainfall event, which is the highest design standard that we use for storm. Uh, rainfall event, which is the highest design standard that we use for storm sewer. So um, it's held to a very high standard. Um, erosion control was another one that Aaron brought up. Um, obviously bluff protection, as I mentioned, that was. One of the first things we noted about it. Um, the erosion control plan does have silt fence that aligns the. The bluff setback throughout the whole development. So that's going to be, you know, um, the first thing that's going to check any sediment. Um, and water that's going to be leaving during construction. So. Um, that's the key for that. And then obviously, uh, chapter fifty of the code for bluff protection is in place for a reason. So. Um, staying fifty feet away from the top of the actual bluff with. Um, you know, land alteration and grading improvements. Um, that is why that rule is in place. So that's a far enough. Setback where, you know, the risk is very minimal at that point. So that's the main purpose for that rule. Um, Aaron, was there another question that you had um saved for me?
Do you um talk a little bit about through the review process that we um tried to flip the cul-de-sac?
Hmm, I got that was going to be one of my questions.
Flip the cul-de-sac on the. Sure. Yeah, so. The question is, could the on the private drive, the east west drive? Could the homes go on the north side, essentially backing the existing lots that are that are within the Meadows at Spring Creek? And. Um, that doesn't work very well from a grading perspective. Um, with the bluff setbacks that you've you've seen on that plan and have noted. Um, how it how it kind of jogs in and out, getting a a straight road that would go. Um, across where all those homes would go would be um probably impossible. So. That that's why the the road is on the north side. And then secondly, just from a topography perspective. Um, the the grade naturally drops off to the south. So that's where the homes um. Want to be naturally just from setting them up because um your windows in the backyard and the basements. Generally, the grade falls away as you go to the backyard. So it just, it's kind of natural that that's where they would go. Um, in addition to just physically being unable to fit a road in against the bluff. Um, those are the two main reasons for that.
Okay, and then um, uh. This is one of my standard questions at every meeting. Um, Aaron, have also, there's the water statistic, right? That reviews all of the the stormwater and land use. Um. Uh, we we have already started that or they've already looked at it since we're already at our at our preliminary plat. So maybe you or Aaron could go into that again. For the new people.
So the city of Carver is unique. It's actually in two different um watershed districts. There's a Carver County Watershed Ma- Management Organization. And then there's the Lower Minnesota River Watershed District. This um project itself is in within the Lower Minnesota River Watershed District. And the city of Carver has a municipal agreement with the lower men that. Basically, we, the city of Carver is the local government unit. That reviews and administers all stormwater permitting rules for the district. And our ordinances are consistent with with um the district's rules. So we. Everything that we review is consistent with their rules, so they give us the the authority to do that review.
Okay. Yeah, so um. That's typically one of my questions is making sure that those reviews have been um already. So that that's good. Um. Uh, did you have anything else, Aaron? Do we want to open it up to the rest of the commission for questions?
Uh, I think Dave has a couple of comments and then I have one more when he's.
Sure, okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Dave.
Thanks, Chair and planning, members of the planning commission again. Um, just a couple of points of clarification. There was a, I think, a suggestion that. Um, the planning commission recommendation had already been made prior to tonight's public hearing. I I assume that comment was alluding to Aaron's staff report. It's just important to to say. That, and I know the commissioners know this, but just for the members of the public. It it's standard practice for staff to provide a written report to the planning commission. Prior to the public hearing to give the commission um the information that it needs to um. Consider public comment and and make a recommendation. Those staff reports always contain within them. A staff recommendation about the project. Um, and then the PC uh the the planning commission, you know, will make its recommendation. You know, after hearing the public comments like we're doing tonight. So nothing done on this application deviates from that um. Standard practice uh that the city uses with any land use application. Um, also, just given some of the comments, I think it's important to make the commission. Uh, aware uh or reiterate frankly, you're you've been doing this um a long time. That, you know, the personal comments made about a developer in any case, whether negative or positive, frankly, um, are not valid reasons. For a city to to deny a land use application. You know, the commission should focus on the merits of the application, of course, taken to account all the. Um, very helpful public comments and things that were brought to the attention of the commissioners tonight. Um, from the number of folks that have participated. And then, you know, as to the letter of credit, and there's been some discussion about that. It's just worth uh noting that the city always protects its interests. And the interest of of the community uh in its development agreements that it. Uh, requires all developers to enter into and that will always include a financial security requirement. To make sure that that the improvements are not only constructed, but um Aaron Schmidt can can go to this, that that they're properly constructed. I mean, they're inspected and many times, um, it's not uncommon for city engineers, regardless of the developer to. Tell the development team they have to make changes or fix things. And, you know, that's just the way that these very elaborate and extensive developments work. Given the amount of public improvements and other improvements that are that are constructed. Um, a- and just to give everybody a little bit of an idea of of a letter of credit, I mean, they're they're irrevocable. Um, and they're always required. It's it's uh, in fact, not only would it be a requirement of any plat. Approval by the city, but I think it's also in your city code. Um, but but they're. A guarantee by a a federally insured bank to pay the city if there's a developer default. Um, and because it's irrevocable, uh, that's a requirement because it is an irrevocable document. The terms can't be changed by the developer. Um, it can't terminate, it can't expire or anything like that without the city being a. Given an opportunity to draw on the entire amount. So uh, those are commonly used in the development world. Um. To ensure that developers meet their obligations. Um, and in fact, it's a, like I said, a requirement in the city of Carver and there'd be. Um, absolutely no situation where the city wouldn't require all the financial assurances and other things from um. The developer in this case, you know, should this development get get approved or in any other case, that's that's common practice for the city. So. Again, I just wanted to make a few points uh of clarification in that respect.
Alright, Reed, I'm going to slip in with one more.
Yep.
So there was a question about fifteen percent of of PRD um being preserved for common open space. And there's a section of our code that says common open space may be suitably improved for its intended use, but common open space containing natural features. Which are existing trees and ground cover worthy of preservation may be left unimproved. So for that fifteen percent, the bluff area would qualify. Um, I thought the trail would, but I think we might be rethinking that a little bit. So that's my final comment for now.
Okay. Um, so I guess I'll kick it off to anyone on the commission who want to take us to have some questions. I I have a few, so.
Uh, Commissioner Boudal, I just have one question. The only, the only. Item that doesn't meet anything within the city code is going from the R two, the side yard setbacks from seven and a half down to five feet. Everything else meets the requirements.
So it's the seven and a half down to five and then it's the lot size. So R two, the minimum lot size is seven thousand. Where this request is fifty-five hundred.
Okay. That's all my questions, Reed.
Sure, uh, Jim or uh Cindy?
I I just wanted to make a comment.
Sure, go ahead.
A lot of people talked about. This project being a benefit to the city. I mean. I don't know what we think of the city. We don't divide up the cash that comes in in for, comes in from a project like this. The city is the people, the residents, and if anybody benefits, it is through lower taxes or. New parks or whatever. The city itself doesn't gain, you know, the the city government. I know the planning commission doesn't divide up the funds, so. The other one is, uh, you know, we need, our function is to protect the residents. But our function is also to protect property owners. Whether they have a house on it now or they're planning to build future houses. And we also have a responsibility for other people that want to move to Carver. To get the benefits that we all got. You don't get to cut that off just because you live here now and you don't want anybody else to come in. And I think we all have to think about that. And the other, the other thing is, I mean, we talked about. Uh, preserving the land. If you look at Outlet A, that's almost as big as the area the. That are going to get houses on it. So we are protecting a lot of land. In this proper, in this proposal. That's all I have.
Thanks, Jim.
Aaron, could you tell us, um, was there any consideration to doing less houses? I know you said you didn't want us to look into the density because it gets a little wonky. Um, how did we arrive at twenty-four homes as opposed to twenty-two or twenty? And what kind of has progressed to this point?
Sure. So the city doesn't set the specific number of lots. We just set the density. The developer comes in with a number of lots. So we haven't um drilled down into the math of what does twenty-two look like versus twenty-four. Definitely something we can take a look at, but it's just what the developer proposed. And it meant that density, which is the important piece here. So we don't advocate to ever say you need X number of lots to make this project work. It's that density piece for us, where the. Developer obviously has some different calculations, things they need to run. What makes a site profitable developers? They are a for-profit business. So I suspect that was part of it too. Definitely something that we can drill into before um the city council meeting, just so we can have. A clear understanding of what that would do to the density. The trickiest part is if you just arbitrarily start choosing which lots to take out. Um, you might take out the largest or you might take out the smallest, depending on which way you want the density to go. So that's my warning against. Um, just doing math against it because if you remove a lot, that lot is still buildable. So it needs to be added back to the calculation, which is a little bit tricky, but we can definitely explore that with the developer in the next couple of weeks.
But it's, it would reduce it though.
So Aaron, as a follow-up to that, sorry, um, if we, if we want to have that conversation, if we're already approving it tonight. That means we're approving it with twenty-four lots, correct? So how does that work?
So you're recommending approval of the preliminary plat. An option would be, uh, you could recommend approval of the preliminary plat with the intention that staff and the developer. Uh, come back with some density calculations. I can't say at this meeting that. Yes, X, Y, Z might happen just because we don't know. We can't make those guesses at this point, but. Um, we can definitely work with the developers, see what makes sense for them and what makes sense for us too.
And and then we, again, maybe a procedural thing, there's still the final plat too, right? So um, there's the. You know, again, for the public here, uh, we have our, you know, concept phase, which you've already had. This is the preliminary. And then there's a final plat. So usually the final and preliminary are the same, but there there is still a chance to change some things. Um. So, uh, yeah, I guess just keeping there. Any, I have some questions if no one else on the commission does. Okay, um, okay, good. Yeah, no, go for it.
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to make a couple of comments.
Absolutely, go ahead.
There was a lot of input tonight, first of all.
Great, no, that is excellent.
Yes, yes, it is definitely excellent. Um, I'm also impressed uh with the fact that developers offered to meet with. Uh, residents adjacent to this development and something might change coming out of the, out of that discussion. So. I'm in agreement with Stephanie that, you know, maybe we, you know, if 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 we decide to. Approve or recommend to the council approval of this preliminary plat, it could be contingent upon. Uh, decisions made by uh city staff, developer and these concerned residents. Um, but also at the same time, I want to caution that. Um. Uh, we don't have the right to deny a developer to do a development. That meets code and that meets land use. So, you know. I just, I think, um, I mean, and I, and I think that as the the majority of us probably feel like, yes, this should, development should. Go through, but it could be tweaked so that there's less pain to the residents to the north. So that's a, that was all the comment I wanted to make.
Alright. Yep, um, yeah, I guess I'll, I'll start with my, my list. Thankfully, Aaron was taking notes as well as, was I. Uh, so I think, I think that hit most of the, the questions that the the public had, I think fairly well. Um, I guess my only, maybe, you know, that, the. I guess my big concern is, is the cul-de-sac getting, um, do you have, let's see. Uh, Aaron, do you want to put up the the plot map again so people can follow? I have it up on my other screen here. Um. Yeah, so the the one, right, the cul-de-sac and then the house that has those little dotted. Uh, up there in the corners, is that, that makes sense? Yeah, okay, that's the retaining wall. Okay, yeah, um, that. Yeah, I mean, if there's anything we can do to tweak the plan to get that. You know, I don't know, adjust the the lots. It looks like maybe there's, you know, again, I don't want to backseat the the plan, but. But I mean, anything we can do to to give that resident a little more, little more buffer, right? Uh, you know. Push the lots down or tweak the cul-de-sac shape. I mean, not, I don't know. I think that would be something that, that. That we should definitely look into. Um, I I'm not sure how. How much more work I want to make for you, but uh. Yeah, and then I think the other question of of why, why didn't we just put the houses on the other sides that. That their, the road didn't go through those, the other backyard, which obviously is not ideal for. For everybody, but I think Aaron answered that pretty well with the existing grade and, you know, typically you want, you know, your. Your rear of your house to have your walkout or lookout basement. So that that makes some sense there. Um. So on the, so you said that. If we switched it to a public street, we would. It would need to be wider to accommodate the parking on both sides. Is there no way we can do like a variance? To make, make it a public street, but only have parking on one side? Or is that just too crazy to, to get into the, the weeds? And there's so many other issues in terms of, um, you know, that kind of stuff.
So the public street, if it were to be thirty-two feet across, you could park on both sides.
Both sides, okay. Okay, and then that, that's the main uh design, right? I mean. Typically, you know, mostly don't have uh a private street, but in this case, we're doing it to. Allow for more buffer, right? Because we can make a, a private street smaller than than the public, right? So then that allows the developer and the plant to have, like you said, the more trees and buffering. Um. You didn't, were we going to have any like landscape berms or did they get it? Do we have any detail on, on just other kind of. Uh, improvements to kind of, again, be be good neighbors, right? To do as much as we can to to. Preserve the the views of the the neighbors on green ash there. Um, you know, plant trees and that stuff did. How how far along are you guys on that? Or or I know we have a landscape plan. Is that, is that in here typically? I think, you know, there's where sometimes we get detailed, you know, where bushes and trees are going on me.
Yeah, so the landscape plan is in the packet.
Okay, that's what I thought.
The idea of a berm, they typically take up a little more space, but it's definitely something we can explore.
Yeah, and it might be a little noise, right? The the berms theoretically help reduce noise. I know we had some of that on. Uh, the uh development over close by the two twelve. Obviously, this is going to be, noises are way, but um. Yeah, and then, uh, yeah, I guess the other. Um. Again, following on, if 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 there's, there's. again, following on, if, if, if there's, there's options to, you know, so do you have the list of the lot sizes again? So there were, right, it, it's kind of confusing, right? Because we say the minimum is seven, but then we are going to have, the purity is going to allow up to 5,000. But we only had four, four or five lots that were in that, in that range? I can't see your screen. I see a black screen. Yeah, no problem. Yeah, right, because it, you know, it's the, right, so the, the purity was saying the minimum, but, you know, I, I think the, you know, you know, mathematically, right, averages and mean, but if we looked at the actual numbers, there are only a very few lots that were actually that small, right? Yeah, those seven, yeah, seven, eight, nine, 10, and they're not even, they're even above the 5,500 they were asking for. So, okay. And then like you said, the typical, typical size was 7,000 at the current density, right? And then the R2 is our least dense.
We have an R1 district too, so R1 is the lowest density.
Okay. Was there any, what was, is there any thinking of that? Or is that the developer kind of picks what, what density they want for the?
So we set the density with the comp plan.
The comp plan, okay, okay. Yep, and then the comp plan is the one where we had, is the long-term plan, where we had to file it with like the, I don't know if you want me to go into that a little just again for the public, right? That's the long-term plan that we have to file with the, the state or the county.
The Met Council.
The Met, there you go, okay, yeah, the Met Council, right? So that, that's not something that we have a lot of flexibility on, right? Once we've set that plan, it's, it's locked in at a five or 10-year window and it's like a long-term, you just maybe a little more detail for the, the people on the call or the meeting with the comp plan.
So since we're part of the seven county metropolitan area, we're required to complete a comprehensive planning process every 10 years. So that requires us to look at every property in Carver as well as our growth area, which is a majority of Dogren Township. So we take a look at properties and then the Met Council sets some standards that we need to meet, including that density requirement. So low density, which is R1 and R2, needs to be three to five units per acre. So can it go below three without an amendment to the comprehensive plan? I don't anticipate that that would be supported by the Met Council at this time, just based on the other specifications that they've given us in the plan.
Okay, so yeah, I guess that's not something, right? That's a far more involved step to, to get changed, okay? And then I guess maybe that, this slide reminds me again that the total area of the, the parcel is actually really huge, right? So there's 10, 10 approximately, 10 acres, right? On this one, but only, we're only actually building on two, 1.3.
So in total, I think the entire site is about 14 and I think about six are buildable.
Six build, right, so, so in terms of, you know, the actual land that people, it's like you said, the bluff and all those trees are staying, it's just going to be a very small portion on the top. Basically, that's going to be built, right? So, um, okay. Okay, um, I think that hit all my main talking points slash questions. So does the commission want to discuss having Aaron do some more work of, of maybe doing a, a 23 or 22 house, see how that affects, can we hit the density there and, or do we want to see what that is or is that maybe something we wait until final plat to look at or?
So I would request that you make it less, like we need to hit 22 or 23 lots. So Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there's opportunity to say recommending approval contingent on staff exploring different densities prior to the city council meeting.
Yeah, that works.
Okay. Okay, is that, I mean?
I think that's what I would like to see. I think there's a lot of concerns by the residents and I agree with them. But I also understand that if they are within all of our codes, they have a right to develop the land. But I'd like to see some more compromise before we, we give that final approval. And I don't think that it's fair to wait until final plat.
Okay, Jim or Cindy, do you guys have any thoughts on making Aaron do a little more work on maybe a couple of different options?
Yeah, I, I agree with Stephanie about, you know, seeing, and what Aaron said about seeing if we can, you know, change the density a little bit. And then I'd also like to see what comes of the developer meeting with the neighbors.
Yeah.
You know, I don't expect anything major, but I mean, there could be some things that, you know, would help.
Yeah, I mean, I think, in, in, in general, I mean, I think, again, compliment Aaron and, and the developer. They seem like they've tried to make a good compromise at the start, right? I think, I think the big sticking point is, is the overall total number. And then anything we can do to improve, like I said, the, the least disruptive to the, you know, the, the homes along the edge. And I, I think it sounds like the, the private street is actually going to be the big, biggest benefit in that terms, right? Because then again, allows us to add more, more landscaping and buffering between the, the houses, right? And then, again, I think the engineer answered my question. If we, if we tried to move the street around, that's just not feasible, the way the topography and, uh, you know, you know, you know, the realities, right? I mean, so, so yeah, I think that's kind of where I'm thinking. Jim, did you have anything you want to chime in?
Uh, I could go along with that.
Okay.
So are you making a motion?
Uh, well, I'm, I don't, the chair doesn't usually.
Can I jump in chair real quick?
Yes.
Just to clarify, thank you. I usually try to not be too involved in this stuff, but I, I want to make sure I understand what, what the question was. You know, I suppose if the planning commission wants to do what you just mentioned, and that would be make a recommendation that's of approval contingent on, you know, city staff and the developer looking at other options regarding, you know, the reduction of, of one or two lots to talk and to talk about those options, I think that's fine. I just want to make sure you know that, you know, this wouldn't come back to the planning commission and then it would go to the council. I think the staff and the developer between now and when it goes to the council would look at those options and present their findings to the council. Ultimately, it would be up to the council on what the decision might be on the application. You know, I suppose your other option in, Aaron can correct me or tell me if this doesn't work for the timelines, but I assume it does. The statutory timelines for making a decision on these applications. You could always table a recommendation and bring it back to a, you know, the next planning commission meeting. That would give staff that opportunity to look at those options. You know, the public hearing has, has happened. If you did that, we would of course welcome members of the public all back to that hearing or to that meeting to listen to the discussion. But if you want to hold off on making a recommendation until those options are explored, that would be another choice tonight. And again, I just want to make sure that you understand that if you do it in the first way that was discussed and, and I think considered, that it wouldn't come back to the planning commission, it would just go right to the council given the opportunity for Aaron and the developer to look at those different densities. So hopefully that makes sense.
Yeah, I think so. So would it make sense to split the rezoning and the, the, the recommendation? Or are they, are they kind of tied together? Is the rezoning kind of contingent on having a plan? Or, or could we do the, you know, I, I mean, I think in general, it, it's, you know, obviously we, we don't want to tell the builder what they can do with their land and, you know, but we also, like I said, want to be respectful and try to get the best for everyone, right? So, um, I, I mean, go ahead.
I don't think it makes sense to bifurcate the.
Okay, okay, okay.
I would keep them together, Aaron, you know, the timelines are a little different with the rezoning. You've got 60 days up to 120 on that. The plat, you always have 120 on a preliminary plat. So I, I guess I'll put you on the spot here and just make sure that if they did want to bring it back, they could do that under the 60-day rule.
Yeah, and I guess the other question is, Aaron, do you think you can, uh, I mean, I don't know how, how many other developments we have in flight, right? Do you think getting a few different scenarios in time for the, the city council meeting is, is doable without you guys having to work too crazy hard or? Or if we pushed it out a month, would that throw off the developer's timeline too much?
So I suspect that it would with the developer, just based on purchase agreement.
Okay, no problem.
But it's absolutely your discretion, so.
My thought is we're, we're the ones making the recommendation, the city council's making the ultimate decision.
Right, right.
I would propose, can I make the motion on it?
Sure, go ahead.
I propose to recommend the preliminary, horrible word, plats for Brookview with the conditions of having city staff review the density to see if anything could be changed or adjusted and then moving forward from there.
Okay, do I have a second?
Commissioner Monroe seconds that.
All right, thanks Cindy. All right, um, I think we've had a pretty good discussion on.
And I have one more thing.
Sure, absolutely.
I think I have a concern of continuing to move it forward and letting the city council make the final decision because we're, I mean, we're basically taking ourselves out of the entire discussion by doing that. I just want to put that on the record because that, that does bother me because we aren't going to know what the final decision is or what has happened between now and March 7th.
Can I add something?
Go ahead Cindy.
I understand, I understand. I understand your concern Stephanie, but in the end, the city council makes the decision anyway. What we're doing is recommending that we look at the densities if we can, if we can make it so it's a little easier on the neighbors of the north, we will do that. Uh, I mean, we will, that, that would be our recommendation.
Yeah.
Um, so, but the city council is going to be the final one to decide anyway. So at least they will know this was our input. This is what, this is what we heard at our public hearing, you know, and this is what the residents are interested in. So I think, I think it's safe to go ahead and go this way. Having been a city council member, we usually took the, we almost always took the board, uh, commission's recommendation.
And we have Joy and someone on the phone also.
Yeah, Joy, Joy's our new city council representative, right? We typically have a, a city council liaison who, who sits in on planning commission's meeting. Apparently for this, this year, it's Joy, welcome, I guess.
Julie, it's just for tonight.
Oh, just for tonight, oh, okay. Oh, go ahead, go ahead and pull the fast one on you.
I'm subbing for Glenn and so, so I just, I just want to state a couple of things. I was going to kind of wait till the end of the meeting, but I want to say how appreciative I am to be here to listen to all of this resident engagement and input and feedback, plus all of the commission's comments and concerns. It has been extremely valuable, especially since this is going to be coming to the council. I feel like I have a really good understanding of what the community is feeling about this and can help express that at the city council. So that's what, that's what my job is here to listen and to, to bring that forward along with your recommendation to the council. I was on the planning commission for 15 years, so I've sat in your shoes. And I will concur that this is probably one of the biggest feedback meetings I've seen. So I'm really pleased to see the resident engagement. It is, your voices are heard and it is impactful. And so thank you, everybody, for taking out the time tonight to come and ask questions, listen and be heard. So I, I concur with what Cindy and, you know, Jim are saying about bringing this to the council. They're former council members as well. And I also agree that we really listen to this commission. This is a really important part of our government in hearing the public's comments, taking your recommendations with those comments up to the council. So we listen. So that's all I have to say for now. So I agree with kind of the recommendation that you guys are heading. And we'll be sure to take a look at this recommendation closely when it hits the council.
Okay, anyone else have discussion on the motion on the planning commission? Phil or, uh, I think, I think everyone's talked, so. Okay, Brenda, would you take the role? For the motion to recommend? Should we restate?
Yeah, could you restate please?
Uh, I just didn't write anything down. Let's see.
You want me to restate it?
Yeah, air, air, yeah, yeah, Krista, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to recommend the approval of a preliminary plat of Brookview with conditions of the planning commission to have staff review the density and look at other options.
All right.
Additional options.
All right, excellence.
Can I, I apologize, can I ask one brief question? Because my internet went out a little bit here, I think while Aaron was talking. From a timeline perspective, I know Mr. Anderson had proposed another option of tabling this to the next planning commission. I may have missed the answer around the timing of this development and the timeline that we have available. Was that feasible?
It's feasible, yes. I'd like to connect with Kurt, just based on their timeline, if they have a purchase agreement that's set to expire as well.
Okay, so it is feasible if we wanted to table it.
Correct.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure that commission is aware of that option.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I, I, well, I guess we have a motion, right? So we have to go, go through with it, so let's. But yeah, I guess we just go through with the motion. I think, I think we definitely want to have, have, have the conditions attached. So that's what we have in front of us, so let's.
Yeah, can I, can I say one thing?
Go ahead, yeah.
Um, I thought, Aaron, I thought you said this would throw the timeline off if we tabled it.
I suspect it would for Kurt, but we're on a different timeline.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. Okay, uh, yeah, I, I guess, you know, I guess maybe one to two houses, I, I hope wouldn't make a huge difference in terms of, of, you know, just maybe giving a little more room on some of those streets. I mean, I think it's definitely something we want to have looked at, so, um, yeah, let's, let's take a look at. Actually, I need a second, do I have a second for Krista's?
I already seconded.
Oh, okay, you did, I would say, sorry, thank you. Lost track, all right. So Brenda, would you take the role, the commissioners for the vote?
Commissioner Goodell.
Commissioner Goodell, aye.
Commissioner Monroe.
Commissioner Monroe, aye.
Commissioner Wiegand.
Commissioner Wiegand, aye.
Commissioner Griesinger.
Commissioner Griesinger, aye.
Chair Welch.
Aye. All right, okay, so now we have to move on to the, oh, I lost my, my motion, all right. Should, oh, should we have done the?
Chair Welch.
On the zoning second, yep, now here we go.
We are to motion number two for the rezoning request.
Exactly, okay, yeah, I just, I had to get my papers back in order, thank you Brenda. All right, um, do I have a motion to approve the rezoning for Brookview with the conditions that the city office and city planner look at adjusting number of houses to between 22 to 23?
Reid, I would ask that you don't set a number.
Set a number, okay.
I was going to say, I, I will make a motion to approve the rezoning based on, with the contingency that the city staff and the developer work together to see if there are better density calculations. Am I saying that correctly?
I, I think that gives us enough leeway. Aaron, what do you?
I'm not giving you specific numbers.
Yeah, exactly.
David isn't jumping in, so I think we're okay.
Okay, legally, okay, excellent. Thank you, Stephanie, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, thanks, Jim, all right. Uh, I think we've had plenty of discussion, anyone have anything else? Okay, excellence, Brenda, would you please take the role for the motion?
Commissioner Goodell.
Commissioner Goodell, aye.
Commissioner Monroe.
Commissioner Monroe, aye.
Commissioner Wiegand.
Commissioner Wiegand, aye.
Commissioner Griesinger.
Commissioner Griesinger, aye.
Chair Welch.
Aye.
All right, okay, uh, all right, so. All right, so that is all of our, I'm muting myself a good, okay. That is all of our new business. I know it's getting late, does anyone have any communications or any other thing they want to add before we adjourn?
The city council meeting that will discuss this, you said, was May, no, March seventh?
Oh, yeah, Erin, okay, and then, that's a good, so Erin, is there also a public hearing at that city council meeting for the, the rezoning, or is that typically not something that's, okay?
So there's not a public hearing, but the city council can choose to take public comment if they wish.
Okay, okay, so there's another opportunity for the people at this meeting if they want to, again, keep, keep going on the process for the city council meeting, okay, excellent. I guess, yeah, I didn't have anything, I think, thank you, maybe in the general, thank you to everyone for sticking around with us for one of our longer meetings, how many people, the public are still on here, and, and thanks to everyone on the commission, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right, thank you Krista, do I have a second?
Commissioner Griesinger, seconds.
Thank you, Stephanie, all right. Brenda, would you take the role for the vote, please?
Commissioner Goodell.
Commissioner Goodell, aye.
Commissioner Monroe.
Commissioner Monroe, aye.
Commissioner Wiegand.
Commissioner Wiegand, aye.
Commissioner Griesinger.
Commissioner Griesinger, aye.
Chair Welch.
Aye. All right, again, thank you, everybody, and have a good night.
Good night.